Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May 16. We have a few announcements. First, the DPW, Department of Public Works, is hosting its annual DPW Town Meeting Forum tomorrow, Wednesday, May 17 at 7:00 in Room 103 downstairs in Town Hall. And Commissioner Andy Pappasturgen and his staff will be on hand to answer any questions, concerns, comments residents have about the operations of the Public Works Department. And for complete details, please visit the calendar on the town's website. I have found that session to be very interesting, and it's really a way to meet the -- all the top management at DPW. And thankfully, it has reduced the length of town meeting. Because typically, what used to happen, town meeting members would get up to the microphone at town meeting and ask questions like, "Why aren't the leaves on my street being raked?" Well, you know, they don't rake leaves anymore. So now you can go to the DPW Town Meeting Forum and ask that question and get your answers. And also, as part of National Public Works Week, DPW is hosting its annual open house on Tuesday, May 23 from 12 noon to 6:00 at the Municipal Service Center located at 870 Hammond Road. This free event offers residents of all ages a close-up, hands-on experience on all aspects of the operations of the Public Works Department. We encourage new and seasoned residents to attend this yearly event for a unique opportunity to learn more about the people and operations that keep our community running. Commissioner Pappasturgen will be speaking more about National Public Works Week during tonight's meeting. And tomorrow night is the Seventh Annual Brookline Youth Awards at the Coolidge Corner Cinema. And I've asked Harvey Brodmann and Lloyd Gyllenhaal to tell us a little about it.
Thank you. My name's Harvey Brodmann. I'm the publisher of Brookline Hub and the president of ADW Video Productions. Congratulations, Selectmen Hamilton. And you're really in for it. This is Lloyd Gyllenhaal. And so the Brookline Youth Awards, we're in our seventh year. It is at the Coolidge Corner Theater Wednesday night at 7:00 PM, May 17. We're very excited. So basically, people from all over Brookline, but mostly teachers, administrators, students, parents, residents, write essays about young people. And a nomination committee of about 25 people get together and decide which students will win awards. Twelve students are chosen, and I take them into the studio, and we interview them. And the interviews go on the big screen at the Coolidge, and it's a pretty exciting event. We also have three adult categories. One of them, Social Justice Award, which this year goes to a fantastic teacher, Malcolm Cawthon. And also, there is Ethel Wise Service Award, which is for a businessperson in town that goes the extra mile for young people. Claire Flower Brett, Abe Faber, and Kristy Timmon will be the recipients of this year's Ethel Wise Service Award. We have a new award this year, and I'm really, really proud of it, and I hope the whole community will be proud of it. So our first Youth of the Year was in 2011, and her name is Leslie Cerreal Guerrero. Leslie came to the United States in 2003 with her family. They didn't speak English. And Leslie was our first Youth of the Year just five or six years later, or seven or eight years later. Her younger brother, Mariano, won a Youth Award in 2012, and her younger sister, Caramel, won a Youth Award in 2016. So that's a pretty amazing achievement. We've never had three members of one family to win an award, and so we decided to create a new award, Parent of the Year. So the Cerreal Guerreros still speak very little English. They had great jobs in the Dominican Republic, and they decided because of the crime, corruption, and poverty in the Dominican Republic, that they'll make the ultimate sacrifice for their families. And so they came, they lived in a one-bedroom apartment at first. They took odd jobs. Mariano was a baseball star at Brookline High School and used his connections. One of the coaches was with the maintenance department and got his dad a job as a janitor. So we interviewed the two oldest Cerreal Guerreros, and their interviews will be on the screen. And I think it'll be a pretty moving moment to honor this immigrant family, especially given the present political climate and the views of a lot of Americans about immigrants, that, you know, Brookline is instead honoring an immigrant family. And each one of these children have gone on, they're superstars, and they're very well-respected, and these are pillars of our community. Also, Mel Kleckner is going to join Andrew Bott, the Superintendent of Schools, and Anthony Meyer, the Headmaster of Brookline High School, and four students from Brookline High School who are young men, and myself, and will all be wearing red high-heeled shoes onstage as part of a promotion for the Jennifer A. Lynch Foundation Walk a Mile Event, which is on May 21, this Sunday. So we're going to use this platform at the Coolidge to do that. And Brookline Community Foundation and a lot of other nonprofits will also be there to use the crowd that will be there to support their causes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It should be an exciting event, and I hope as many people can go as we can fill the place.
Free admission.
Ah, even better.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a recommendation for an orthopedic surgeon for the individual's work walking in those shoes. But seriously, folks, I'm going to have to miss this year's celebration. I went last year. It was incredibly inspiring. And one thing that I think we should emphasize, because of the number of immigrant families that, through your program and through other programs, present themselves as such shining examples of what we really want people in this community to be like. We should emphasize, in fact, that it's not just that -- I mean, these families come here under horrible circumstances many times, yet they rise to the top. And I always use the example that I really like of the Haitian immigrants, who are always the valedictorians in the high school when the Globe publishes their pictures in the spring. So the Guerrero family and others have really contributed to this community, to this country, in huge ways, and I think we should really reflect on and appreciate what they bring. Not the demons that they're characterized as by many people, but people who make America much better than it would be without them. And there are just so many examples of that.
And I want to just mention that we couldn't -- the support of the town of Brookline, Mel came to us in 2014 and asked if we would -- if the event could be an official Brookline event, and if we would work with the Department of Diversity, Inclusion, and Human Relations, Community Relations, and Dr. Lloyd Gyllenhaal. The partnership has just been fantastic, and so it's been a real pleasure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Going from a community celebration to a sad event, the Board of Selectmen shares in the grief over the passing of Brookline Lieutenant June Murphy, who passed away on May 12. Lieutenant Murphy joined the force in 1984. She was the first female Brookline officer to earn the rank of Sergeant in 2000, and the first female sergeant to earn the rank of Lieutenant in 2003. Lieutenant Murphy also played an integral role in the creation of the Massachusetts Association of Women in Law Enforcement. Lieutenant Murphy was a well-respected member of the police community and will be missed by all. Information regarding services can be found in the Police Department's Facebook page.
Thank you for saying that. It was a shock to all of us when we got the call this weekend. June had been with us for more than 32 years, and throughout her time in the Police Department, she's really been a standout. She did a lot, not only for our women as they came on and paved the way for them, but she did a lot of mentoring for them, helped them get to the positions that they wanted to be in. And throughout June's career, she served most of it in the Patrol Division, but for about seven, seven-and-a-half-year hiatus, she went to our IT department. And that's when we were changing over computer systems and everything, and she helped us through that. And then she got promoted to Sergeant, came out, she went back to Patrol. And when she made Lieutenant, for just about the entire time, she's been the officer in charge of our day platoon. You mentioned the women's group that she was a founder of, Marley. She did two stints as President of Marley. She really developed an award, I guess you could say, an award program for that group, where women from across the state are nominated for their leadership qualities or their educational stuff they've done for their community. Brookline has been represented in those award-winning recipients, and this year she nominated one of our women, Michelle Lawler, who's going to be honored with an award next week down in Stonehill at their event. June also was a participant in the Board of Directors of the International Association of Women in Policing. And so her impact goes a lot beyond Brookline, and she's not someone that's going to be easily replaced, not just by us, but especially by her family. Our services will be -- the services will be held at Bellow Day Wake tomorrow night, and the funeral services will be Thursday at St. Mary's. Traffic will be impacted. If you saw the tweets that went out today, because we are expecting a sizable crowd, and we're going to be closing down a couple of streets around here. But it's all been worked out. It's just people are going to be inconvenienced for a little bit.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
I just wanted to draw attention to one event. I feel bad doing it after such a well-deserved recognition of Lieutenant Murphy. But speaking of street closures, the Bike Parade is this Sunday, and people should just be aware that traffic's going to be impacted on Beacon Street around 1:00 PM. That's an event that starts, I think, at 11:30. Sort of the events around the ride start at 11:30 at Amory Park. But keep in mind that there will be a rolling shutdown of Beacon Street starting at 1:00 PM.
Can I add? Sunday's also BU's commencement, so people should be aware that that area is going to be really, really impacted.
Sounds like a good idea. Okay, let's --
Oh, just one announcement. The BNA, TMMA, and the League of Women Voters is having their warrant article debate tomorrow night.
In this room?
In this room, around 7:00 PM. Refreshments at 6:30.
Okay. So let's dive into the calendar. We have the minutes for May 9. I have a few additions.
I have some edits as well.
I'll move acceptance of the minutes as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The next item is the question of accepting a grant in the amount of $49.94 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security's Highway Safety Division BU's for programs aimed at reducing underage drinking and drunk driving. Chief Aleary.
Yes, this is -- we have received a grant, not in this amount, but in about double the amount, for the past about seven years. We use a lot of this to do stings, to do shoulder taps in restaurants, but also to combat the loud parties and underage drinking that occur when schools start up, and we have a lot of college students, especially in the North Brookline area. So we will use this money to support those programs that we do to reduce it again. As I said, it's not as much as we normally get, it's about half that, but it's a short window where we have to use it by September 30. It will get used, because we do a lot of programs, like I said, in North Brookline, aside from the move-in day that we meet the parents and tell them about what the expectations of the students are, things like that. And we'll see, hopefully see the numbers go down. At times of the year, the state will put on a statewide mobilization effort to try to reduce certain things that cause dangerous driving. And we've been consistently applying for them and being successful in getting these grants. And this is just a continuation of an earlier grant that we got earlier this year that you approached.
Okay. I'll move that we accept the grant in the amount of $6,000 from the Governor's Highway Safety Bureau to be used for seatbelt safety, distracted driving, and impaired driving enforcement. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Aleary. By the time, that six months from now, I'll get the names right. Next item is a question of accepting a gift from Chestnut Hill Realty in the amount of $10,000 for support in the creation of the zoning bylaw necessary to implement the Hancock Village Memorandum of Agreement. I'll speak to it. We've been in discussions -- the board will recall, and the public will recall, that we entered into a memorandum of agreement regarding the Hancock Village litigation. And we've been in discussions with Hancock Village to codify that agreement into a zoning bylaw and a development agreement and a deed restriction. And those discussions have gone a little slower than I would have hoped, but they're going, and we're making progress. And we're expecting a proposed zoning bylaw at a future town meeting date to be determined. It may be prior to the November town meeting. So more to come. I think the agreement is much better than the proposed 40B. Has a lot of benefits for the neighborhood, a lot of benefits for the town, and it's just much, much, much better. So this gift is actually defraying our legal costs, our outside counsel costs, that Chestnut Hill Realty is paying for.
Right. So we're going to get the money. We're going to hire an attorney.
We have hired.
We've hired an attorney.
Yes.
We're going to draft it, and then --
Right. And then it'll be -- it'll go through the town meeting vetting process. It's my hope and intent -- it's my intention and hope to start floating the proposed language before it gets into the warrant, before we lock it into the warrant for feedback, especially amongst the neighbors and litigants, co-litigants. So that -- I'm hoping that that's going to happen sometime in June. So we're going to start -- people will be seeing progress, I'd say, within the next month publicly, sometime, give or take a few weeks. So we'll be moving. Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, I'll move that we accept this gift from Chestnut Hill Realty for an amount of up to $10,000 to support the creation of a zoning bylaw necessary to implement the Hancock Village Memorandum of Agreement. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Next item is the question of approving the request of Recreation Director Lisa Parides for two appropriation transfers in the amount of $5,000 and $2,500. Lisa Parides.
Yes, thank you, Lisa Parides, Recreation Director. You should have paperwork that says otherwise. Okay, there are two account transfers, both in the amount of $7,500.
See, I'm showing --
I see one, $7,500 coming, and two accounts taking the $7,500. Is that correct?
Yeah, there are two separate transfers from the general fund.
I see $7,500 from rec admin to the swimming pool and electricity, totaling $7,500, right?
Yes.
So $5,000 for water sewer, $2,500 for electricity.
Right, yeah, no, there was a separate -- there was a second transfer in the amount of $7,500. I can furnish you with the paperwork as well. You don't have that.
Don't seem to have it.
Yeah, all right. I didn't see that until this afternoon.
So we'll be transferring $15,000 total, right?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. One is to cover utilities, and the other is to cover additional amenities, furniture for the -- during the pool renovation.
So you don't want to cut the water off?
No. Actually, yeah, the utilities was a low estimate on the general fund side, so we're able to cover it from another line item that was not used.
Okay, so why don't you give me the paperwork on the second one so I can have it as a motion? So, okay, so the second one is from custodial to furniture, $7,500. And this is furniture for the reception area for the pool.
Correct.
Okay, so I will move two transfers. The first one is $7,500 from rec admin, equipment maintenance, to the swimming pool water sewer, $5,000, and electricity, rec admin electricity, $2,500. So it's $7,500 from equipment maintenance, to $5,000 water sewer, and $2,500 electricity. The second transfer is $7,500 from rec admin custodial to rec swimming pool furniture. Okay, any questions? Clear as mud?
Clear enough.
All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So why don't I give this to Kate?
Thank you.
So she has it for the minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next item is two more. It's a contract for garden landscape improvements with Ronald A. Marini Corporation in the amount -- oh, there's a big one, $732,000.
Good evening. Erin Gallantine, Director of Parks and Open Space. We are really excited to commence the renovation of Emerson Garden Playground. It was last renovated in 1995 and is completely overdue. We had an eight-month public design review process. It was really successful. And the renovation includes new irrigation, new lawns, significant grading, drainage improvements, new play equipment, reconstruction of the path system, plantings, and renovated water play. So everything that you love about Emerson Garden will remain the same, but it will be a significant upgrade from what's a pretty deteriorated condition right now. Ronald Marini Corporation is a contractor who we have worked with successfully in the past. They were the contractor for the accessible Putterham Reading Garden that we recently completed, and also our contractor of record for Longwood Playground.
Okay. So when is this happening?
This is scheduled to commence mid-June.
Okay. Emerson Garden is the one right down here.
Oh, Davis.
Right.
Yeah, Davis.
Yeah, okay.
Right behind the police station. It's a two-wicker.
It's going to be closed, I presume, this summer?
It will be closed. We have -- we've relocated, worked with Recreation to relocate the summer concerts.
The concert's going to be, yeah.
They're looking at various locations. They were either going to move them around. We had talked about Cypress, which also has the utility set up to support the concerts, so.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the board? I'll move that we approve and execute the contract for the Emerson Garden Landscape Improvements with Ronald Marini Corporation in the amount of $732,000. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you.
And the next item is a question of approving the application of New England Treatment Access, doing business as NEDA for a change in the manager from Melanie Nash to Samantha Coulter.
I believe they were invited to come, so if the board feels it would be important to meet them directly, then we'll reschedule for next week. Otherwise, the paperwork is here. But I understand there may have been some confusion about whether or not they should come to meet the board, so if you --
Well, wouldn't we have to do it in two weeks? Next week is town meeting.
We could do it briefly at the meeting before our town meeting, if necessary, but do you have a --
Do we want to have the person come in?
They've been checked out by the --
Yeah, they've been checked out by the Police Department. It's, you know, it's -- we haven't had any issues with NEDA.
They've been pretty good citizens so far.
I'm less concerned about the change of manager, given that the applicant has some experience managing a dispensary. It's this second change that NEDA is proposing, the change in the Director of Operations, which caught my eye, given that the applicant doesn't appear to have worked in the industry before. So my request would be to do Item G, and then, if we could, invite the applicant to come in for the Director of Operations position.
Okay, and that's the --
That's agenda Item H.
Right, and that's the position that actually really runs the show.
Yep.
So that makes sense. And Amanda Rosatano has been the person who's been appearing before us a lot.
Absolutely.
So if there's going to be turnover in that position, I think that's a key position. It'd be a good idea for us to meet that person. Okay, so I will move that we, in Item G, approve the application of New England Treatment Access, doing businesses as NEDA for a change in manager from Melanie Nash to Samantha Coulter. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And chair votes aye. We will hold Item H. Next item is a question of reconsidering at a future date the April 25 vote of the Board of Selectmen pertaining to the April 4th appeal of an action taken by the Transportation Board to implement certain traffic calming measures on Babcock Street. Let me say a few words about that. That was a long, rather contentious hearing, and, you know, since that time, I think there've been some new facts that have come our way. And I would like the board to reconsider and entertain and look at those new facts and do a little investigation with the Transportation Department, and I'll take the lead with that. So I also know that a number of folks in the neighborhood have been gathering signatures for a petition at town meeting. So by voting to reconsider at a future date, it kind of tolls the time period for that appeal and gives us the opportunity to reconsider this with the hope that we can resolve things without having to go to a town meeting. I think town meeting isn't necessarily the optimal venue for something like this. So if we can resolve it and come up with a better solution, that certainly would be my goal, to see if we can come up or instruct -- we're not transportation engineers, so certainly we're not going to be doing any kind of transportation design, but we can perhaps set some policies and give some policy guidance to help the Transportation Board and Transportation Department come up with a solution that meets the goals of safety while accommodating interests of the fire department and not going overboard with some of the features that -- going overboard with some of the features that we saw. Yes, Selectman Green?
Yeah, I, I agree with reconsidering this. I want to make clear that, in my view, this is not questioning the process that the Transportation Board went through, or in any way questioning, you know, their actions in this process. It's unfortunate that neither the speakers at our hearing nor the Fire Chief brought to our attention the critical information, I think, is the new facts you're referring to. And it's very difficult for us to, to make decisions without that type of information, so.
Okay, any other comments? So I will move that we reconsider at a future date the April 25 vote of the Board of Selectmen pertaining to the April 4th appeal of an action taken by the Transportation Board to implement certain traffic calming measures on Babcock Street. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. And we'll, we'll announce when that will be.
Widely advertised.
Yeah. Hopefully, it won't be another two-hour session. Please. Okay, thank you. We have some temporary licenses, so let me go through them. I will move that we grant a one-day entertainment license to the Brookline Music School Arts Brookline in connection with the Brookline Porch Fest to be held on June 10th from 12 to 6:00. And that's going to be in locations all over town, and there'll be publicity and information prior. That's a fun event. I'll also move that we grant a temporary wine and malt alcoholic beverage sales license to the Olive Connection for a wine education class to be held on Thursday, May 25th, from 6:00 to 9:00 at 1426 Beacon Street. I'll also move that we grant a permit to serve alcoholic beverages on town property, non-sales all kinds, to Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a wedding reception to be held on Saturday, May 27th, from 5:00 to 11:00 at 15 Newton Street. I'll also move that we grant a permit to serve alcoholic beverages on town property to Lars Anderson Auto Museum for a post-wedding brunch to be held on Monday, May 29th, from 9:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. at 15 Newton Street, and that one is pending police approval. I'll also move that we grant a temporary all-kinds alcoholic beverage sales license to Celebrations Fund, Planning and Community Development in association with the JFK 100 Celebration Committee for a Town Dance to be held on Monday, May 29th, from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Brookline High School. And lastly, but not leastly, I'll move that we grant a temporary wine and malt beverage license to Pine Manor College for Memorial Luncheon to be held on May 18th, from 12:30 to 3:30 at 400 Heath Street.
And I'll note that the paperwork appears to be in order, with the exception of that, that one application that we're waiting police approval on, the Police Department has seen no reason to deny the applications.
Okay. Let me just make a mention of the Item N, which is the sock hop that's going to happen in the Schlong's Gym, organized by Jim Solomon of the Fireplace. And it's one of the events of the JFK 100 Celebration. You're going to hear a little bit more about that later, but I just wanted to tell you, let you know that that's one of the ones that we will be approving tonight, so. It should be a lot of fun. So you can get your tickets, fireplacerestaurant.com. Those tickets are $40, and that includes some food. So.
Okay.
Thank you, 60's food?
60's food, no, it's JFK food.
That means 50's, 60's.
I think Jim is, Jim is doing these things based on Kennedy family recipes.
Okay, so, we didn't vote, did we?
No.
Oh, okay. So, so this is to grant all those temporary licenses. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. We are running way ahead of schedule. Yeah, we, so, I'm just looking at the calendar, see if there's stuff we can move around. We have a bunch of public hearings that have been noticed for specific times. So we do have a proclamation proclaiming Taiwanese-American Heritage Week, so we can take care of that. And we've been asked to proclaim May 14th to the 21st as Taiwanese-American Heritage Week, and this is to recognize Asian-Americans with Taiwan heritage and, and-
I'll just say, I mean, the proclamation emphasizes the fact that Asian-Americans in general, but specifically from the island of Taiwan, have made significant contributions to America, as well as to Brookline, and is really, they play an important role in the diversity of the community and the benefits that we receive from that diversity. You know, Taiwan, the very existence of Taiwan is steeped in diplomatic controversy. We are not taking a stand with respect to that, with respect to even the name Taiwan, which is in dispute with the People's Republic of China's point of view there. But we just want to use this as an opportunity to recognize, you know, the important role that people from this country, this, people from Taiwan have played in our community and in this, in the country generally.
Okay.
And, and people should use this as an opportunity to learn a little bit about Taiwan, the situation with Taiwan and China, and Taiwan Relations Act, and just be more educated about things that play a very, very important role in, in our lives in terms of, you know, everything from trade to security issues, so.
In addition, let me just say that-
Sure.
There's several very good Taiwanese restaurants.
[laughing]
And I happen to love Taiwanese food. And it's very similar to Chinese, but they have, you know, certain dishes that they're very proud of. So over on Brighton Avenue, there's Jojo Taipei, and in Chinatown, there's Taiwan Cafe. And I know that there's several more, and I won't bore you with lists, but try it, it's really good.
Okay, so I will move that we adopt the proclamation proclaiming the week of May 14th to 21st as Taiwanese-American Heritage Week. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
One of these days, I'll remember you.
Just don't call me Franco.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And I'll forget your name, too.
Okay.
And Chair votes aye. And we have another proclamation proclaiming the week of May 21st to the 27th as National Public Works Week. Commissioner, welcome.
Good evening. Selectman Green did such a great job with the last proclamation. I'm wondering if he'd like to do mine as well.
[laughing] I need advance warnings, I could do a little research.
I'll provide it for you. Welcome, Selectman Hamilton. I think this is the first time I've been here with you on the Board, so welcome. I won't take up too much of your time. I have just a couple of items in addition to the proclamation that I'll get to. But this year, the American Public Works Association has designated the week of May 21st to the 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week. This annual event has been sponsored by APWA since 1960, and its primary purpose is to educate communities and their leaders on the importance of our nation's public infrastructure and our public works services. Our dedicated employees provide extensive and often critical services to the community. These include, and, and just bear with me, I'm going to run down this list because I think it's important for you to hear it. These include engineering, transportation, highway, sanitation, recycling, roadway maintenance, street cleaning, snow and ice control, traffic control, street lighting, parking, line painting, sidewalk maintenance, equipment maintenance, parks and open space, conservation, public grounds maintenance, school grounds maintenance, skating rink maintenance, forestry services, cemetery operations, water distribution, and sore and stormwater drainage system maintenance. It's safe to say that the Department of Public Works enhances the quality of life for every resident in some way every day of the week. While the demands of our changing world require our employees to be available as, as first responders, it is our belief that it's important for our community to honor those who devote their lives to its services. I therefore respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen officially designate the week of May 21st through 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week in the town of Brookline.
Okay.
So, and I've included a proclamation-
Right.
-for you as well.
I see that. Any, anything to add?
Just to thank you-
Yeah.
...for everything that you and your colleagues in the Department of Public Works do. It's spring, and I have to say that the town looks beautiful. The grass is green and the flowers are blooming, and the trees are budding. So thank you very much for that, and we made it through the winter relatively unscathed, so kudos to you for that.
I'll be coming back with the final note on that in a week or so.
You had, you had to rain on the parade.
Almost literally.
Exactly.
And I'll mention once again the DPW Annual Open House on May 23rd.
I was getting to that.
Ah, okay, you, so, that's your cue.
In addition to the proclamation, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to also, as we approach the annual town meeting, to let everybody know that tomorrow night at 7:00 in Room 103 of the Town Hall is our annual DPW Town Meeting Member Forum that we hold every single year. We try, and that's done before town meeting, and its purpose is to give town meeting members a chance to come in and, and kind of be inquisitive about all public works operations, and some would say to interrogate us regarding those. But myself and my staff look forward to doing this every year, and some years, we get a very good turnout, some years, not so good. It depends on, on what's on the agenda. We're thinking this year might be a light agenda because we don't have that many issues to address anymore, hopefully. But that event is tomorrow night. I invite, of course, all members of the public to attend, in addition to town meeting members. But again, its purpose is to try to not take up the time of town meeting with business that we can deal with one-on-one with all of my staff before town meeting. So that's tomorrow night.
Could you, could you just tell us the time?
7:00 p.m., Room 103, Town Hall, first floor of Town Hall.
And since, since your predecessors started doing this, town meeting has been considerably shortened.
I like to think it's because of my professional attitude, so, but we won't go there. And there's one more event I'd like to bring to the Board's attention, because next, the week after next will be National Public Works Week. We will be holding our annual DPW Open House on Tuesday, May 23rd, at the Municipal Service Center. As we do every year, we entertain the children from Brookline's third-grade students to come up and jump all over our equipment, and everything will be on display, and learn how to plant flowers, and take a look at our sewer cameras, and all things to do with wastewater and water distribution. So nobody looks more forward to this event than my staff, believe me. They have a good time that day.
No, the kids, the kids love it. I brought my grandchildren.
They do. And we've learned over the years that the most important thing that we have to do that day is disconnect the horns from all the equipment, so we don't disturb the neighbors, particularly the air horns and some of our larger pieces of equipment. And once we get through that-
Take all the fun out of it.
I know. The Municipal Service Center will be open from 12:00 noon till 6:00 p.m. for the general public, that they welcome to come in, bring their children, and, and tour our facility, and take a look at all of our equipment, climb all over it, or whatever you want to do. And we will be there to, to show you what we do every single day. So I also invite members of the Board of Selectmen to, to come and take a look as well. If you've never seen it, it's quite a show.
Yeah, I was there last year, and it was a lot of fun. Okay, so why don't we vote the proclamation? I'll move that we adopt the proclamation proclaiming the week of May 21st to 27th as National Public Works Week. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye.
Thank you very much. If I could, just for a minute?
Sure.
You all may have noticed that our new waste cots are in process of being distributed this week.
I have mine.
Oh. Never made it to my part of town.
And, and we have been getting them out on the street. Our goal is to have all the cots distributed where they belong by the, by the end of next week. Of course, the implementation date, the go-live date for automated collection is the week of May 30th. May 30th is, of course, a holiday, so-
Well, the 29th, it's 30th is Tuesday.
No, the 30th, it's the week of May 30th, anyway. The holidays on-
Memorial Day Week.
Collection will begin, automated collection will begin that Tuesday, and collection days are displaced by one day for the rest of the week, as we do normally. But the message that I'd like to get out to the, to the general public is, even though your cots are being distributed now, and you have them now, please do not use those cots until the week of May 30th on your regular collection day. We are not able to pick them up until our new equipment hits the road on that particular day. So if you, if you fill them with trash and put them out at the curb, we won't be able to take them and empty them. So we're asking the public to not use those cots until the week of May 30th on your regular collection day.
Is there a notice to that effect on-
Oh, yes.
Yeah, okay.
We've included, we've, we've done exhaustive public relations with this. We've included a bag of, of information that's attached to each cot that has a, that has a very nice-looking sanitation information guide, program guide, that explains all of that. It's very prominent on the front page, "Do not use your town-issued black trash cot before May 30th." And it has a very nice picture of the Commissioner of Public Works on there with another message that says basically the same thing. So we're urging people to please read that.
That's small print.
Very small. And we've also, in addition to all of that, given everybody a free purple overflow bag for use as they see fit going forward, so.
And I note the, the new clothes and other stuff, recycling has started?
Yes, that started several weeks ago.
Yeah.
And people are starting to get on board with that, and it's, it appears that it should be a success.
Okay, cool. A lot of changes. Are, when are you, you're going to be picking up the old trash barrels?
Yes.
And how's that going to work?
For the first two weeks after the go-live date of May 30th, if you wish us to take your old barrels, to dispose of them, simply place them at the curb upside down, next to your black cot. That'll indicate to our people that you want us to get rid of it, and we will collect it.
Okay, cool. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And the next item is the JFK Centennial Birthday Celebration.
We don't have everyone here, so I'm wondering whether we-
Okay, we can-
Move up, since Melissa is here.
Yeah, Melissa, we're going to do the budget, okay. So we're going to move over to Item 12. So instead of doing it at the end of the night, we'll do it at the beginning of the night and give the Advisory Committee a chance to reflect on our actions for a change. So-
So when last we left, the Board, you should have it in your packet, Item Number 12, which has your original language that you voted last week, and then revise the language after consulting with the moderator that anticipates the need for additional feasibility pend- pending the outcome of some of the legal issues that need to be sorted out. So, there's some language in here and the new language is in bold, so you can see revised potential vote that the board may want to consider related to Article 9.
So, just to catch everybody up, this morning there was a Building Committee meeting and some additional options were shown to the Building Committee which potentially respond to some of the land use issues that have been raised by attorneys representing some The options range from reducing the parking lot to moving parking underneath the school to a more extreme option of building the new school entirely at the front of the Baldwin site, removing any school use from any of the potentially contested lands. That, of course, produces perhaps a less desirable school. You're kind of scrunching everything into a smaller space, so you build higher. It's kind of like a balloon. You push in one direction and there's a reaction in the other direction. And if we have to do any of those things, it's going to require additional study. So, this change in language allows for additional feasibility analysis, if necessary. It gives us flexibility in how these funds are used. And therefore, I'm suggesting that we reconsider and vote this language. That gives us a little more flexibility. I was at an Advisory Committee meeting on Thursday night, which was quite an interesting debate, went on for, what, two hours? It was quite long. And the committee was kind of split between wanting to wait for the additional legal analysis and put it off to a future town meeting. And some folks, some folks were willing to go with this language with different Advisory Committee language, Advisory Committee participation language built right into the motion. And they decided to table it until tonight. So, I think it's timely and useful for us to try and vote this before the Advisory Committee does so that they know what we've done and then they can consider it and decide whether or not they want to come along with us. To me, too, integral in this, though not in the actual language of the appropriation language, is the commitment that four Advisory Committee members will be permitted to participate with us, not vote, but participate and give us their input and opinions. And I'm sure we will certainly heed them and hear what they have to say. Any, so that's my pitch.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'll move to reconsider.
Okay, so us-
I voted for the original motion, so.
Yeah, we all did. So, Selectman Heller's motion to reconsider, if you agree, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I will move the revised language that's before you, which includes the ability to use the money for feasibility and schematics. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I just want to say that the language on page, on the second page, should be included in the explanation that we will be writing for the supplement. And that language, Kate, should be in the minutes, that we're going to be including it in the explanation. Why don't we take a 10-minute break? And then we'll be back here at 7:15. We're okay.
They have to track it.
It makes sense.
So, that's the one that's the silver lining of having any use of that to keep 40 minutes of work. Their rush hours are in the morning, maybe two hours to morning. The road construction is ramped up, so there's two little pockets. It's at the end of the fall when they track finish everything. And it's summer when they redol. They get rid of that. My main, I take the often dead end, the Indian Parkway to the West Park area, and they close the Indian Parkway. So, I have no way to work it. I have a very big time. So, it can be very tricky.
I just got rid of the concrete. I thought it was going to be late for sure. And it's unpredictable. It's a constant change. It's gotten so much worse in the last five years. Then it's harder to change.
We're nice in infrastructure, but it'll be better in a while, I hope. Fingers crossed.
We're talking about traffic. Here's the statistic or estimate from 12 to 20 pounds, 14 pounds. This is maybe about five years ago, but it's probably factored down, not worth. Since we have all the development-
Are you? Hey, it was on a second ago.
Okay.
I don't know why.
I'm trying for that. There you go, yeah.
And you know what it is already?
I didn't make any packing. They're gonna move me today. They'll catch you.
There's gonna be a lot of stuff.
Better and stuff.
Yeah, or, yeah, give us stuff.
Probably inundated with stuff.
That's my notes.
Yes.
Fix the resolutions off the loop?
I have no idea.
Oh, yes.
From the top.
This one's too low.
Absolutely, she's not eating that pizza. So, the next item is the JFK Centennial Birthday Celebration. And members of the JFK 100 Celebration Committee will appear to present information about the planned events for the John F. Kennedy Centennial Birthday Celebration to be held on May 29th. Selectman Heller?
Okay, I'll just say a couple of words of introduction. This has been an ongoing effort which began in the fall and it's been a terrific collaboration between the town and the National Park Service. I want to thank them for all of their help. And they're engaging in a very robust community process, holding a lot of community meetings, getting a lot of great ideas, working on those ideas and getting them to fruition. It's been, it's been quite an effort, but I think it's gonna be rewarding. The community, I think, is gonna have a really good time and a very significant commemoration of John Kennedy's birthday and centennial on Beale Street. And we've, because of the coincidence of the two, Memorial Day and the birthday occurring the same day, we've also had significant participation by the Veterans Department and will involve the Memorial Day parade. So, with that, I'll introduce Evan Laird, who's a member of the Planning Department staff, and he's gonna tell us all about it.
Thank you, Selectman Heller, and thank you for the board of selectmen. It's my first presentation since I've been working in Brookline. It's a pleasure to finally be in front of you. I want to first direct your attention to the JFK Centennial website. It was built with Ben Vivante. We decided that the JFK Centennial Celebration really needed an identity. It was important that the town's commitment to the event and the collaboration with the National Park Service was displayed and displayed prominently. You can link, I want to show the board as well as the community, just where you can access all the information for the event. I'm gonna leave details of the specific events to Myra Harrison from the National Park Service, and I will highlight just over a few things. But if you access the BrooklineMA.gov website, you can access right on the front page JFK Centennial Birthday Celebration. You can click through and it'll bring you to a landing page.
this is, 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 truly a hero for Brookline. When we return, and we're gonna have our procession coming in. And the next change is we're not gonna do it at the War Memorial. We're gonna do it on the, by the overhang at Town Hall to get everybody off the street 'cause we anticipate a little larger crowd than normal. And to honor JFK, our guest speaker will be, and I have to look at this to make sure I get the name right, Alan S. Banks, who's the Supervisory Park Ranger, and he's also a U.S. Coast Guard veteran. We're also gonna be giving an award to Louis Kilosi, who is a national treasure, and he was on, in the same PT Boat Squadron as JFK. He's about ninety-two, and he was a baby when he went in, he was seventeen, and he's one of the nicest men you ever met, and we're gonna recognize his service and his years in the country. We'll also be recognizing our former chief, George Sumard, former police George Sumard service to both his country and the Korean War and to our veterans. And I'm gonna be presenting an award from my office to, uh, to our current chief, Daniel O'Leary, 'cause I cannot stress how much of an environment he's created with his police department supporting veterans. It's gonna be a very exciting, uh, day. The other thing we're doing, this little bit of a change, is we're gonna have a band from the height, from the, not the high school band, from the school playing, so we have some more participation, participation, and da-da-da-da. The bus that we use to run for the cemetery won't be leaving after the event, it'll be going back and forth for a couple runs to Beale Street so people can enjoy both events at the same time. Do y'all have any questions?
No.
Sounds great. Get up early and come on down. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. And then Myra Harrison will be speaking for the National Park Service.
Okay. Come on up. Go in the party.
Well, thank you very much for letting me come before you. It's nice to see you. And I can't begin to tell you how thrilled we are with the partnership that we've had with the town of Brookline. It's been just terrific. And many people to thank, and we'll send you a letter and enumerate them all, but people could not have been more helpful and more creative. It's been wonderful. And it's nice that we're having this partnership in this year because it's stunning to think that it's not only Kennedy's one-hundredth birthday, but it's also the fiftieth anniversary of the creation of the site itself as a national park, which is stunning. It is one of the very smallest sites in the National Park Service. One of the two smallest sites, I'm sorry I can't tell you what number one is, but I'm gonna go back and look that up. But it certainly is a small site with a very, very big story, and we're very proud of that story and proud to be in a position to tell it. The, the site, of course, features the fact that the child is father to the man, and this child was born in Brookline and grew up in Brookline for the first ten years of his life. And all of those important learnings that one does as a young person took place right here. And from that site, that's really the, people think of Hyannis Port as the seat of the Kennedys, and in so many ways it is, but also in so many ways, this small house is the beginnings of this family. And the first four children were born in that house, and then the Kennedys moved on to Abbotsford Road and had another bunch of children, and both Eunice and Bobby were born in the Abbotsford Road House. So, Brookline has many distinctions that are associated with the Kennedys. And to me, it's so remarkable that the neighborhood that surrounds these places is, is intact. We have pictures of Joe and Jack on the side of the Beale Street House, and the houses that are, you see in the back are still there today. So, it's a rich legacy that we all have and that we all enjoy. And on the day, on the twenty-ninth, we will be having site tours throughout the day. In fact, this summer, we are, we're pinching pennies, don't tell Longfellow and Olmsted, but we are borrowing, we are borrowing from Peter to pay Jack in this summer in order to be sure that we can have the site open as much as possible. And we are increasing the ranger staff, at least for a few months. I guess we're, pretty soon we'll get our fiscal year seventeen allocation, and that may be a, a bad day, but until then, until then, it is our plan to have the site open seven days a week because we've had an awful lot of interest in people returning to the site. And on the twenty-ninth, there will be, we're told, we expect them to show busloads of Kennedy family members from Ireland who will be coming. So, lots of people are making pilgrimages. And it has been very interesting over the years to note how many foreign visitors come to the Kennedy site. He remains an icon of the American presidency, not only in our country, but also in many foreign countries. So, from one to two, we will be having, one of the great legacies that Kennedy has left us are his speeches and his words and his ideas and his inspiration. And we will be recalling those by having a series of readers read portions of Kennedy's speeches between one and two, and also give reflections on what Kennedy means to them. Included will be David Newman, who is a professor at MIT in the Apollo Program, professor at MIT, and who has, who was recently the deputy administrator of NASA, and she said that Kennedy is deeply important in her choice of career. Juliette Kayyum will be there. Mike and Kitty Dukakis will also be joining us, and there are several other people who will be reading in that time period. At two o'clock, we will have a ceremony celebrating the unveiling of the JFK stamp. It's already been unveiled, so this is not, this is not like a peek of the, this is just a revisiting of an important issuance in this centennial year, and we will have stamp cancellations available for people that day. And then at two o'clock, after the stamp unveiling, we will have sort of a, a more serious program that will include Frederick Lo Jival, who is the Pulitzer Prize-winning historian at Harvard and who is currently writing a, a new biography of JFK, and he has a particular foreign affairs expertise. And we will also have our wonderful Joseph Kennedy III. And he will give us, he will be our keynote address, if you will. After that, at three o'clock, we'll all be looking skyward, sort of like the, I think of the Indian tribes, the, in, elsewhere where they build runways in order to attract planes, that's sort of what we're gonna be doing, 'cause there's going to be a flyover of Navy jets at three o'clock, which is when the president was born, so we'll be looking skyward. And then we will have a brief recital by a flute quintet from the Brookline Music School. Then we'll serve some refreshments, won't that be fun? Including Boston cream pie cupcakes, probably a delicacy you may not have tasted before in cupcake form. And then rounding out the day, we will have a concert by the Tin Pan Trio. They're a pretty terrific sort of roots group, very cheerful music purveyors, whom we had last year at the Longfellow Site in celebration of the centennial of the National Park Service, so they played music of that era. And they will be playing on Beale Street until everything comes to a close, and we all go either to the sock hop or to the Coolidge in order, is it Apollo, what is the, it is Apollo thirteen that night, so. Anyway, that is our day of celebration. And again, we're just terribly grateful to the town and the active citizenry that has been involved with this, and we look forward to perhaps celebrating his one-hundred-and-first birthday, maybe not as elaborately, but this partnership is perhaps overdue in that we haven't made enough of an effort to connect with the town deeply, though we're very connected with the school programs and others. So, we look forward to this partnership continuing and working together and finding more creative ways that we can enhance tourism in the town of Brookline and keep us all conscious of this very important legacy that the Kennedys have given us.
I can answer the question as to what's the smallest national park?
You can?
I can. It's the Thaddeus Cusco National Memorial.
Oh, in Philadelphia?
Yep.
Right.
Same Polish-Lithuanian military engineer.
Well, I'm terribly impressed that you know that, and I should've known that because I remember someone telling me that.
Oh, I grew up.
I've actually been there.
I should've known that.
Well, it's nice to be bigger than something. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
I'd just want to point out that you do have in your packet a list of events from, they started way back in February, and, and they'll continue until November twenty-second, which is, of course, the anniversary of JFK's assassination, and there will be a remembrance ceremony. But let me just add one more thing, which is that I also wanna thank very much the departments in the town, because I think they really pitched in DPW, veterans, the police, the planning department. With, at the community meetings, we've had representatives from the Chamber of Commerce, we've had representatives from the library, we've had representatives from many different realtors, from the chamber and realtors. We've had so much great cooperation, so it's, I think it'll be a very enjoyable and memorable day, and I hope that you all be able to.
Selkman Green.
Yeah. I always tell my kids, and they don't listen, but I tell them that instead of celebrating, you know, events like this, use it as an excuse to learn about, you know, a period in history or something that you wouldn't normally know about. And I'm glad to see that you're having guests read selections from Kennedy's speeches. Many years ago, I actually witnessed a speech by Kennedy in Montana when I was young, and I looked it up on the internet and found it. And let me tell you, looking back, what, whatever number of years, fifty years or so, to how people thought of the world in nineteen sixty-three, and this was September nineteen sixty-three, compared to how we think of the world, is very interesting as well as very, very educational. And, you know, using a celebration of this as just an excuse to go out and learn something about, in this case, Kennedy and his era, I think is something that I encourage people to do. They should do it all the time, but, you know, a celebration like we're, we're going through right now is an excuse to really ramp that up.
Okay. Thank you. I think we're ready to move on. We have some licensing hearings, and the first one up is the application of Waxy's Brookline LLC Doing Businesses Waxy's. Justin Ferland, manager, holder of an all kinds of beverage and common vitriol license at ten thirty-two Beacon Street for an increase in entertainment and the addition of outside entertainment. As follows, change the entertainment license to allow for non-amplified acoustic music within the four walls. Restaurant, allow the restaurant to have a DJ within the four walls. The restaurant, allow the installation of two weatherproof patio speakers to allow for music on the patio, and then instrumental music, guitar, wind, brass, one to four instruments, vocal music, excuse me, one to three vocalists and a DJ, Sunday to Saturday, eleven AM to twelve thirty AM. Hi.
Hello.
Introduce yourself, please.
My name's Justin Ferland. I'm the manager on record. I came before the board a little over a year ago, and, you know, within that year, I'd like to say that, you know, we've done a great job as being a friend to the neighborhood, friend to Brookline. And the two big issues, I know that came up initially when the license was filed for Waxy's, was, one, that we'd end up like one of the other locations that had issues years back, or we'd end up like the establishment that was in the location before. For those two reasons, I know a lot of those stipulations were put on to the liquor license. And again, like, within the last year, I've taken that responsibility very seriously to hold all those provisions, you know, to the T, dotting the Is. We've been very involved with the community as far as community service. We were the host for the, the BMC Giving Tree this Christmas, it's raised over five thousand dollars in gifts and cash for the hospital for their, their emergency wing for their pediatrics. We have donated a lot of, you know, food and product to Brookline Art Center. So, you know, I, I believe for what we're asking for, for this license change, and again, it's a minimal, a minimal, just, excuse me, as other restaurants are within Brookline. As far as music in the restaurant, all I, all I'm asking the board for is non-amplified music, I'm not looking to do any kind of amplified. I'm not looking to do any kind of amplified music at all in the restaurant. As far as the speakers are concerned, I'm just looking to have ambient music on the patio within the same decibel level that's in the license now, as far as the HVAC units and everything on the roof, which have to be in a certain decibel level. Again, we're just looking for it to be background music tied into the Pandora music system that's already in the restaurant. It would be only on that same zone, no matter what is going on in the restaurant, it's still going to be that same recorded Pandora music that's playing on the patio. And also for that, I'm not looking to do it until 12:30 in the morning. I'm just looking to do it as long as we can seat people on the patio, which right now the license is for 10:00 PM. So I'm trying to find, you know, kind of a happy medium and a compromise to, you know, to try to do something like this. Just still worried competition with other businesses in the area, the restaurants in the area that either have live entertainment or, like Barcelona, for example, has music on their patio. So, yeah, that's about it.
How does non-amplified... How does that work with a DJ?
Well, that's two separate things altogether. The DJ would just literally hook into the same sound system that we have now for pre-recorded music. So it wouldn't be any difference in volume, so to speak, within the restaurant.
So it's not going to turn it into a nightclub?
No, no, no. Again, we're looking to...
Music and dancing?
No, we're looking to do more of like a lounge feel on like a Friday and Saturday night with, you know, just a DJ rather than our pre-recorded music.
We've received a lot of communications from neighbors, mostly commenting on the outdoor speakers. And I'll let some of them speak for themselves.
Okay.
As I'm sure we'll hear. I will say, we have some communication from our police department stating, among other things, that Whole Foods apparently had outdoor speakers, and they've been shut down.
Yeah, that got me in trouble with Whole Foods. I didn't realize they didn't have a license. And so when I wrote the letter to the board, yeah, the management team wasn't too happy with the fact that I called them out on it. But to use that as an example, they have had music on their patio for the year, the past year. And it's never been, you know, obviously, it's, for some people, obviously, it's probably better to ask for forgiveness than permission. But they haven't had any issues with anyone complaining about the music that's literally another shared, our shared wall is Whole Foods.
Yeah, and then apparently, Taberna de Haro across the street doesn't have speakers, according to our police memo, nor does Barcelona, according to our police memo.
Huh, okay. Because when I had spoken to Lieutenant Hayes, I thought he confirmed to me that Barcelona did.
He noted that Barcelona, located at 1700 Beacon, also has a large outside seating area within a budding residential building, and they do not play music on their patio.
Okay.
So...
Do not play music?
On their patio.
Specifically that they don't have speakers?
Doesn't say that. It says they don't play music.
Okay. Well, that could be a difference.
Well, they could use speakers for, to call, you know, patrons who are waiting.
No, I'm saying that to say that they don't play music could mean that they don't have live music outside, as opposed to they don't have speakers outside. That's, you know, which would be a big difference. Be that as it may.
Okay, so the request before us is for DJ within the walls of the restaurant, outdoor speakers, and then instrumental music, including wind, brass, vocalists, and then a DJ. So, anyone wish to speak to this request? I see. Just come on. And please identify yourself. And I'll also ask if someone has said what you're going to say, it's always okay to say, "I agree with so-and-so," rather than repeating the whole thing.
My name's Leah Cohen. I live at 1060 Beacon Street, which is the block next to Waxy's. I'll start by saying that Whole Foods, even if they've had speakers, are open very different hours than what this is dealing with. And let's not forget that even Barcelona has no residential immediately above, neither does Taberna de Haro, so just put that out. I'm speaking against any music on the patio. I'm also hesitant about the DJ situation inside the restaurant. As I said, I live on the next block. I can hear, when there's a band on Comm Ave, I can hear that at night. The sound in that neighborhood travels for blocks. And I know that if there was music on that deck, I would hear it. And I don't want to.
Right, okay.
It's one thing when you can hear Paul McCartney at Fenway, but it's another thing to listen to their DJs and their music for them. So I hope you will deny the permit for the speakers on the deck and the DJ till 2:00 AM. Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, hi. I'm Shirley Chan. I'm a trustee for the Unit 1038, which is the building that abuts Waxy. So we are over two commercial establishments. And our units are about 25 units in the building, of which there is no central air conditioning. That means people keep their windows open in the summer, or they have those, you know, boxy air conditioners that unfortunately are not soundproof. And I think generally speaking, the whole 1038 block has gotten very busy with the new apartment complexes. And I have been a longtime resident of Brookline and really love the restaurants. And I like the fact that Justin has this wonderful restaurant, and I'm very supportive of businesses flourishing. However, I'm also very aware of the ability to keep the noise down. And Barcelona is very noisy now, because they now take up most of the sidewalk. You can hear them across the street at the shaws, because they attract so many people on the patio, not because they have music, just because they have a lot of numbers of people. So I'm very concerned about having, first of all, the outdoor patio speakers, which, if there's a DJ playing on the inside, it's going to be loud music playing on the outside. And secondly, I think the DJ, you can't really listen to DJ music without creating a lot of ruckus. I mean, you're playing music that's loud, people like to dance, they get rowdy, and it just creates a different kind of atmosphere than just dining and having nice guitar players or a four-person chamber, you know, group. So I'm just expressing my opposition to an outdoor patio speaker and also the DJ inside the premises. And I do think Brookline has an ordinance for noise. And I don't know how it works when the residents complain at 10:00 that it's just so loud they can't sleep, you know, something's going on outside. It comes to enforcement. Who enforces this when there's a problem?
Call the police.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for hearing me out.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Hoda Samaha. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
And I live at 1038 Beacon Street, right next door, my building abuts Waxy's. And the bottom line for me, I do have a prepared statement, which I will leave with you, so I won't read the whole thing, is that I'm completely against both requests, the DJ as well as the outdoor speakers. The DJ, because of a personal experience that I had recently when I was eating at Waxy's, and the music was so loud inside that I had to ask it to be turned down so that I could have a comfortable conversation with my dinner partner. Secondly, there's the outdoor speakers. First of all, I'm a, you probably can tell by my zoot suit here, I'm a professional woman. I work every day. I get up very early. I live in a building filled with professional people who probably work every day and get up pretty early. And, you know, in my case, I go to bed pretty early. And on a number of occasions, the chatter from the patio outside Waxy's has been boisterous enough so that I've not been able to get to sleep in a timely fashion. And, you know, there's nothing I can do about it, because they certainly have freedom to operate until 10:30. But I think that having outdoor speakers exacerbate the problem, because people's voices would have to be elevated in order to hear one another. My opinion is that the neighborhood with a, you know, really nothing could be worse for the neighborhood than a joint with a DJ and outdoor speakers. As much as I love music, I think that it would be terribly intrusive. And so I appeal to you to, you know, minimize the amount of noise pollution that already exists in the neighborhood, and to please vote no on both of these requests.
Can I ask a question? Has there been an issue with the indoor music in your apartment and outside? Can you hear it out? Can you hear the music outside?
Inside my apartment? I can't. But I can hear the equipment on the roof inside my apartment.
Okay.
So he's talking about a decibel level that's comparable to the equipment, the HVAC equipment on the roof. And you may or may not have my name on the file, but I did call the police one night because of the noise issue.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So to have something comparable in the front that I have in the back, stereo noise, I'd be pretty cranky.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Franco.
Good evening. My name is Jim Franco, town meeting member, Precinct One. As you may, having your packet or have been delivered today, the precinct town meeting members wrote a letter, copies of which I have, if you don't have them, simply stating that you listen to... Really, listen, there were several, there were five points, but what we want you to do is listen to the neighbors. We understand that the commercial area is important as an amenity for residents, but the outdoor noise on the patio could be a big deal for those people who are abutters. And so we ask you to pay particular attention to the hours. Perhaps the way to work this is to have the neighbors and the business get used to each other and take the smallest, most incremental step that you can if you move to approve some part of the request for an expanded license. The neighbors have been upset and are a little bit apprehensive about what's going on, as you can tell. Thank you very much.
Okay. Ms. Hellman.
Good evening. Carol Hellman, town meeting member from Precinct One. Just to add and not repeat, I think that we need to come to some accommodation in terms of the request for 12:30 AM week-long closing. It seems to me, and I would assume to many people in this room, that Friday, Saturday night, 10:30 is somewhat early for a closing. But for those who work Monday through Friday, 10:30 seems a reasonable hour. 12:30 seems to be beyond the pale during the week, and even perhaps a little long on weekends. But I would suggest that perhaps there's some accommodation there. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else wish to speak to this? Okay, let me bring it into the board. Slickman-Heller.
So I checked with some of our staff on the six-floor process, the permits around town, and I asked if there were any permits for outdoor entertainment. And there are none, zero. I think the other examples that have been brought up were mistakes and have been hopefully corrected. Whole Foods has, you know, stopped the music outside, and the others also. And so I would be very concerned about opening up the idea of outdoor entertainment in Brookline. I think it's, not only, I think, would it bring disturbance to the neighborhood, but it could also act as a precedence for other establishments around the town who are also in neighborhoods that are mixed, very mixed, commercial and residential. So I, for one, will oppose the outdoor music on the patio. The second thing is that I agree with, I thought Jim Franco made an important point, which is that if we allow any of this, we should do it in a slow way, incremental. The idea of just allowing it and then having problems is not appealing to me particularly. So that, you know, I think the third idea that I think we heard, that I would agree with, is the one of the hours. These hours till 12:30 every day, 12:30 in the morning every day, is too much for this neighborhood. I think that right now, we already say that the patio can be open, I believe it's 10:00 or 10:30, and it has to be cleaned and done by 11:00. And I would think that that's a reasonable time for music to cease as well. I don't know how many people are able to hear the inside music at 12:30 AM, but the quieter the street gets, the more people tend to hear other kinds of noises, especially when the door opens and people are going out, et cetera. So that's my feeling about this proposal.
I have some clarifying questions for Mr. Furland. The first is, on our agenda, the instrumental music is listed as just that, instrumental music, guitar, wind, brass, and vocal music. On the application itself, I see an asterisk that says, "non-amplified slash acoustic only." So I'm wondering what the intention is for the instrumental music, if it's going to be amplified or non-amplified. And then I'd also like to hear a little bit more about the business plan for the DJ. What, you said in passing that you're hoping for a lounge feel, but can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. I'm sorry, what was the first question?
Are we talking amplified or non-amplified?
Yeah, all, any music that we're going to do inside the restaurant would be non-amplified. I'm just, again, trying to follow the lead of, just for example, we've got another establishment literally three doors down from us, that on Fridays and Saturdays, they have live music, and we just don't have the opportunity to compete with that. So I'm not looking to do it seven days a week. You know, I just, when I filled out the application, I thought to myself, well, maybe on Tuesday after, Tuesday nights, we'd have acoustic guitar, and Friday, we would have this without an actual calendar of events in my head. So I don't want anyone to think that we're, you know, we're thinking of having a DJ until 12:30 AM, seven days a week. That's not at all the intention.
So what hours are you looking, what hours are you looking for in reality?
You know, in real, on Fridays and Saturdays, I think that, because our last call is at 12:30 by license, I think it would be fair to have the DJ finish right at last call. It allows us to put up the house lights, everyone finishes up, and we're still able to clear everything and get everyone out by license guidelines. You know, for acoustic music during the week, if we're going to do it on a Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday, I think it would be fair to stop at 11:00. Quite frankly, from 11:00 on, it's pretty, during the week in the neighborhood, it's pretty much stragglers anyway, so it would be playing, for the most part, to an empty restaurant or empty bar anytime after 11:30 anyway.
So you're suggesting Sunday to Thursday until 11:00, Friday and Saturday, 12:30? I get the sense, I get the sense, well, I haven't heard from all my colleagues, so I won't say what I get the sense yet about the outdoor patio. I think that one's a lost cause.
Sure. I mean, and again, there was a couple of things I heard people come up and say, not just about the patio, but I wanted to make sure that, again, it's non-amplified music inside the restaurant. The doors are closed in the restaurant. For all of you that knows the build-out that we had to do for that restaurant, that restaurant was literally taken from the studs inside, done and over. It's all well-insulated. It's not, you know, it's a 110-year-old shell, but it's current insulation. When those doors are closed, you can't really hear much that's going on in there. And again, we're not looking to jack up the music and try to chase people out. We're trying to drive business in there. We're trying to drive dinner business in there. And again, I want to be a good neighbor. I'm trying to find some kind of compromise so that, you know, we can have a little bit more success with my business and not irritate the residents at 1038 Beacon Street. That's not my intent. Like, I was joking with the CEO of the restaurant recently, when he said, oh, you know, you think, you know, we could go at one point to do a license from 1:00 to 2:00 AM? And I said, absolutely not. I'm never going to do that as a manager on record, so if you want to have somebody else do that, I'm not going to be there anymore. I'm a personal believer, from the last place I worked, I used to work in Newport, Rhode Island... Rhode Island, I managed the Barkin Crab in Boston and in Newport. I know as a patron, as a general manager, that nothing good happens from 1:00 to 2:00 in the morning. I, I don't, I don't want to see that. Um, and again, I, I want, I want the neighbors to want to come in here, I don't want any animosity, I don't want any, I don't want that. But I do want to find some kind of, some kind of middle ground, some kind of compromise that we can continue to grow this business, you know, and be competitive with other restaurants within walking distance, but, you know, be good neighbors, that's all.
Anyone had, anyone else have any thoughts?
I mean, the, the idea of sort of background music, I mean, seems to me fairly reasonable, but I think that, um, you know, it's, in that neighborhood, it's going to be, background music's going to be heard quite, at quite a distance. So I'm, I'm sort of inclined, you know, to go along with, I think, what, um, what you're suggesting, not to approve the outdoor, um, uh, speakers, uh, but the, the others, I, I think, you know, are perfectly reasonable and, um, you know, I'm willing to go along with them.
Yeah, to me-
That's my thinking.
Yeah, to, to me, as long as you can't hear it outside, um, and we haven't heard any complaints about the music inside being heard outside, is, is that a problem?
It depends on what kind of music is- It depends on what kind of music is being played. So if you have a, a very loud percussion-
Has it, has it been a problem to date?
Not on a regular basis.
Okay.
You know, it's a song here and there. If he's talking about ambient dinner music, that's very different than rock and roll DJ music. If he's talking about rock and roll DJ music, you can hear that. You can hear it when the door opens, and sometimes you can hear it through the wall, depending on how loud the percussion is and how amplified the music is.
Okay.
So, that was my concern, if it's the same decibel level as the HVAC system on the roof in the back, that is, from my perspective as a neighbor, inappropriate. It's too loud.
What is the decibel level for the roof that you refer to?
I can't think of it off the top of my head. I, I want to say it's within 15 decibels of the ambient noise outside. Um, when we first opened, it was a requirement for us to get a professional sound testing done to make sure that the equipment, um, met that, met that standard, which it did. And then, I want to say probably about a month and a half ago or two months ago, another complaint was filed saying that they felt maybe the noise had changed. I went out, hired another noise, um, abatement, sound professional company to come in, um, and they, it still fell below the level it was supposed to, and I submitted that report to the building department.
Okay. Why don't I, um, why don't I make a motion and then, um, you can move to amend, we've got to start somewhere. So, uh, my motion will be to change the entertainment license to allow for non-amplified acoustic music within the four walls of the restaurant, to have a DJ within the four walls, and to have instrumental music, guitar, wind, brass, one to four instruments, vocal music, one to three vocalists, and a DJ, Sunday to Thursday, 11, until 11:00, Friday to Saturday, till midnight. Now, if you think that's too much, amend the motion.
I'll move to amend it. Uh, I think it is a little too much during the week especially. Uh, people are, uh, you know, going, having to go to, get up early to go to work, and, uh, I'm worried, and we can always expand it, it's harder to contract. So I think that, well, we should limit it during the week to 10 o'clock-
Okay.
-at the latest, um, from Sunday to Thursday. Um, Friday and Saturday, I don't feel as strongly about. Um, I noticed that there is no percussion listed here. Um, is that correct? There will be no percussion?
That's fine. I have no idea. Again, I'm, I'm trying to find that.
Okay. You haven't listed percussion on your, uh, list of instrumental music, so-
No drums.
No drums. I mean, I, I, and I'm, and that's one thing I continue to hear is that, that's an issue, and that's fine, I won't, then I won't do drums. I, again, I'm trying to find that middle ground compromise here.
So my motion was to midnight, should we do midnight, 11:30?
Um, well, my motion is till 10 o'clock during the week.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And, uh, I would say, uh, you know, midnight at the latest on, uh, Friday and Saturday.
Okay. Okay, that's-
So we're talking about the, the DJ now?
DJ and the instruments.
Um, you understand that the decibel level still can't be-
Sure, absolutely.
Over a certain amount.
Absolutely.
And you should, uh, get together with people from, um, the, the building department who will, uh, give you the numbers and perhaps even have a, a, a machine-
A decibel meter.
-which reads the, the dB, if, so that you can know when you're in violation-
Sure.
-rather than relying on people to call and tell you.
Absolutely.
Um, okay, so no other motions? So first, we'll take the motion to amend, which is Selectman Heller's motion to amend, which is, Selectman Heller's motion is the same as mine except for, uh, ending the music at 10 o'clock on weekdays.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Of, um-
Sure.
Waxies, uh, 10 o'clock on those days, how does that impact your, your business? I mean, is that a, is that a busy time?
It depends, the wave of business in that restaurant is, is weird. I mean, it can, it, our peak business during the week, it could be either 7:30 or 8:00 when the, the big dinner rush get, gets in. I guess we operate until, um, we have a license until 12:30, but during the week, I, I don't see much business from 11:30 to 12:30. So, I mean, part and parcel of having, like, an acoustic Tuesday would try to keep people in the restaurant for a little bit longer for, you know, additional revenue, and that's, it's kind of that cyclical thought process of maybe if we had it, we'd be able to have a little bit more sales volume on those hours, but we don't know if we're going to have that because we don't have a, the acoustic music there to possibly drive business.
So it sounds like, um, 10 o'clock would not interfere with the, uh, sort of peaks of your business during, during, during those days.
And again, I'm, I'm fine with, I'm fine with that, that's, that's fine.
You know, I'm assuming your motion, uh-
Midnight on Saturday and Sunday.
But it excludes outdoor.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I did not move outdoor. Um, okay, so on Selectman Heller's motion to amend, so this is changing my motion to 10 o'clock, all those on weekdays, Sunday to Thursday. Um, all those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
No.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. So the main motion is Sunday to Thursday until 10:00, Friday, Saturday till midnight. All those in favor, and this is for, uh, this is to change the entertainment license to allow non-amplified acoustic music within the four walls of the restaurant, to allow the restaurant to have a DJ within the four walls of the restaurant, and instrumental music, guitar, wind, brass, one to four instruments, vocal music, one to three vocalists, and a DJ within-
And no percussion.
No percussion within the four walls of the restaurant. And specifically does not allow for the installation of outdoor, um, speakers on the patio. All those in favor of all that, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is a public hearing on the application of Coolidge Oath LLC, doing business as Oath Craft Pizza. Stephen McDonald, manager, holder of a common virtual license for license to expose, keep for sale, and to sell wine malt beverages to be drunk on the premises, has a seven-day common virtual license at 276 Harvard Street with a seating capacity of 30, with hours of operation from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00, liquor hours Sunday from noon to 11:00, and Monday to Saturday, uh, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Howdy, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Karen Sumayo, I am with McDermott Quilty and Miller. To my left, I have Mr. Stephen McDonald, who is the, uh, manager at the location and the proposed manager of record for the license, and to his left is Mr. Max Seal, who is the LLC manager and one of the principals of the proposed licensee entity. Would you like me to proceed?
Sure, please.
By way of reference, um, the board may feel a little bit like there's deja vu, this group was, uh, before you, not that long ago, within the last couple of months, and, um, my colleague, Nick Suzola, was here, uh, with the application for the CV, uh, to get Oath open, um, at our location here in Brookline. And at that time, I know that he gave you an exhaustive, uh, explanation of Oath and who they are and what they do, and hopefully, some of the board members have had an opportunity to go by the location, to really see and experience it for themselves. Uh, at that time, Attorney Suzola also referenced that, um, we had to do this application piecemeal, and that, uh, we would be back in short order with the application for the malt and wine beverages license. So, um, this has always been part of the concept, it's an integral part of the concept, um, making sure that we can cater to, uh, the public demand by our customer base, whether they be single professionals, or families, or couples out, uh, for dinner, whatever that may be, that they have the ability to have a glass of wine or, um, a beer with their, um, salad or pizza, or whatever they may be ordering to eat at the time. Um, to that end, uh, I would reference that, uh, similar concepts are run by Oath in both Somerville and Chestnut Hill at those locations. Uh, the staff here does a really good job in terms of training management, makes sure that they are all tips trained and certified, that everyone is carded when they, um, come in, and the way the service runs is that you are carded and then you are given your beverage at that time, so there's no lag time. With some of the fast casual, um, concepts, we sometimes see a concern about the lag time of if someone goes to a table and how do you lose identification of that person? That's a non-factor here because they're carded and served real-time. Um, the proposed hours of operation are as was read into the record and as they currently operate. Um, again, uh, the staff is tips trained and certified, Mr. McDonald has met with, uh, Lieutenant Hayes and gone over, um, his expectations of a license holder, and in terms of the public need, which of course is the consideration for the, for the board, in addition to, as I mentioned, what our customers would demand, I would add that some of the factors that are typically considered, including traffic and noise, are not considerations here. No one, there's not going to be extra traffic created, of course, um, by, uh, the addition of the malt and wine beverage here. Um, and certainly, I, I understand that the town does have licenses available and would respectfully suggest that this is, uh, a good candidate for consideration, both based on their record, uh, the uniqueness of the concept, as well as the training, um, that goes into making sure that it's a responsible, uh, location for malt and wine service.
So, uh, how, how long have you guys been open now?
Six weeks.
Six weeks open.
How's it going?
It's going great. It's, uh, it's been a blast to, to be a part of the community, and, uh, it's, uh, it's fun to see, you know, we have a lot of good pizza in, in, uh, Brookline, so it's fun to see people do the taste test from the different locations and get the feedback.
You have, uh, just, within half a block, you're the, what, third?
Yeah, there's already, I think there's, my, I don't know if it was in the Boston Globe, but there's already been a couple of articles about how Brookline's becoming like a craft pizza mecca, so people are coming over there to, to try the different ones and compare, and, and I, what I think is really neat is that each concept is very unique and different in its own, so.
Okay. So down to business, um, you've met with Lieutenant Hayes, and, uh, he's explained some of the, uh, Brookline unique requirements, uh, can you tell me what some of those are?
Uh, yeah, absolutely. Um, part of it was having, um, kind of a binder together with my staff, um, when their training date was, what their date of birth is, so that we, we know they're able to serve, um, making sure all our proper post-signage and postings are up, um, and just really being on top of, um, making sure everyone knows what a proper card looks like, and we have the book for reference, uh, and just staying on top of training for everyone.
And, uh, what's your cutoff for carding? Are you-
Uh, we just keep the policy of carding everyone, just so there's no ambiguity.
You're going to card me?
Yes.
And I'll, I'll thank you.
Yep.
It's much easier to have that policy than to use someone's discretion, but I also know that many of us, myself included, appreciate it when it happens. I always greet them with a big thank you.
And, uh, we, we do stings, um, so just be aware of that, and, uh, this is one of those occasions, uh, where we don't want to see you again. So, uh, just, uh, be aware of that.
As Stephen just said, unless you come in for pizza.
There you go. Uh, any questions, comments from the board?
I have an ABCC question. Uh, so I think I heard you say that, uh, alcohol license has been issued to the Chestnut Hill location and the, uh, the Somerville location?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, just for the edification of the board, the, the funding for this business is interesting. It's a, a venture-funded business, I believe, which is not traditional for a restaurant, so I just want to make sure there's not additional paperwork or anything that's required.
Uh, there isn't, and by way of reference, um, and we did submit a copy to Lieutenant Hayes as well, I personally spent some time speaking with him about, uh, the structure. The ABCC, um, forwarded to us, uh, a copy of the, um, disclosure approvals that we forwarded to him, and it is the same structure for each location that has been approved to date.
Okay, any other? Okay.
I've been there. Yeah. I've been there.
Oh, cool. I haven't, I'll have to try it.
Whatever that means.
That's great, thank you.
Um, okay, I will move the, yeah. Oh, this is a public hearing, I've been reminded, so if there's any members of the public who wish to speak for or against this, uh, application, please, uh, speak now or forever, you know how, you know how it ends. Okay. Um, I will then move that we approve the application of Coolidge Oath LLC, doing business as Oath Craft Pizza, Stephen McDonald, manager, holder of a common virtual license for license to expose, keep for sale, and to sell wine and malt beverages to be drunk on the premises, has a seven-day common virtual license at 276 Harvard Street with a seating capacity of 30 hours of operation, Sunday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. liquor hours, Sunday, 12:00 noon to 11:00 p.m., Monday to Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco?
Aye.
Selectman Heller?
Aye.
Selectman Green?
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Good luck.
Thank you very much, have a good night, and I will hand in the green cards and the butter notice.
Okay. Next item is a public hearing on the application of Phoenix Rising Enterprises, doing business as, L, as Best Burger, John Messia, manager, for a license to expose, keep for sale, sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and this is, uh, at the site of the former location of the Middle Gray, right here in Brookline Village at, uh, 195 Washington Street, and this is a seating capacity of 40 inside, 18 outside, hours of operation Monday to Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and liquor hours, the same, serving brunch on Sundays at 10:00 a.m. Howdy.
Good evening, members of the board, I'm Jacob Walters, Walter Shannon and Jensen here in Brookline. Happy to introduce John Masha, who is our proposed manager of the site, Henry Patterson, who will, is one of the owners, um, as well as our events manager, Nick Malia, and our chef, Jesse Lynch. We're hoping that, first of all, this is going to be a burger bar. Brookline Village certainly doesn't have one.
No, it doesn't.
Um, I've sampled lunch in Brookline Village for the past 26 years. Uh, this will be, I hope, a welcome and a good addition. Uh, this particular location has had a couple of restaurants that haven't really made it. We're hopeful and expectant that this one, given its concept, will do well. Uh, we think that would be helpful in terms of vital, revitalizing the site. With reference to, uh, the principals, John Masha has had a, a wealth of experience, uh, in the restaurant business. Uh, he was a former manager at Jerry Remy's Bar and Grill, he was the director of East Coast Operations for the parent company, which I believe is called Tastes on the Fly, for a period of years. He will be the principal, uh, manager, he will be there full-time. Uh, John has met, he is tip-certified, of course, as will anyone who will be serving alcohol, will be tip-certified as well. John has met with Lieutenant Hayes, uh, I'm not party to their discussions, but I understand it went well. Um, Henry Patterson has had a, uh, lifelong experience in the restaurant business, he will be, uh, present, active with the management and with, uh, the operation. The other gentleman I mentioned, uh- The other gentleman I mentioned do not have ownership interests, but Nick will be in charge of events, operations, you know, events rather, at the location, and Jesse's going to be the chef. I have gone through with them the requirements. I've let them know about the occasional stings that happen in Brookline, the importance of carding their customers. I think, given their experience, they know that drill, but I've reminded of them. I know we're not on Beacon Street, but I've mentioned, just from my past experience before this board on liquor licenses, that the town doesn't appreciate double parking for takeout, so they've already aware of that. They have a trash plant in place, something also I have not seen before. They have a room where they're going to have their trash before it goes outside that's at 50 degrees. So they'll be in effect, if I can use this cold storage, certainly help in terms of any kind of insects or what have you, but they'll have a regular trash pickup so that their litter will be dealt with. And again, I think this should be a good concept, and if there are questions, we're obviously happy to address them.
Okay. So when are you guys looking to open?
June.
June, okay. Are you going to be doing any renovations?
Some light facelifts.
Come to the microphone.
Some very light.
So our vast TV audience can hear you.
Some light facelifts, paint, signage, some new furniture, things like that.
I can jump into that, that the prior restaurant, Middle Gray, did an extensive renovation, I think 18 months ago. So we've got the benefit of that, so what's going to be done is relatively minor. And that June date is knock on wood that the ABCC moves along.
Right. So tell us about the concept.
So the concept is fast food, but it's all dry aged hamburgers, which is not done in the country yet. So it's the first of its kind in the country that also has, will hopefully have, a full liquor license.
Okay.
What kind of entertainment? Do you have an entertainment manager?
We might do something very light, like, if we do it at all. It's not a big place. I'm not even sure where we'd put them, but it would be acoustical, non-amplified, imparting more of a meat flavor into the meat before you grind it and make patties out of it.
The meat ground on premises?
No, it is not. It's processed for us and then we hand pack it into patties.
Okay.
We'll also be doing some alternative proteins, like crickets and grasshoppers. Yeah. On a separate griddle, of course.
Seriously?
Yeah.
Will they be chocolate covered? I've heard those are good.
No, no. They'll be burger-based.
Sounds interesting.
Have to have a little levity up here.
Other than insects, what other protein, what other alternative protein are you gonna have?
That's it. Oh, chicken. It will be chicken. We'll probably do a fish sandwich.
The usual turkey.
Turkey.
I hear the insects taste like chicken.
There you go.
I can't say I advised him to talk about crickets.
Okay. So you've met with.
When you say fast food restaurant, what do you mean by that?
It means there's no table service. So you come up and order like you would at a Wendy's, a McDonald's, or a Burger King.
Sort of like Be Good.
Pardon?
Like Be Good.
Yeah, exactly. And then it's seat yourself, and we'll have support staff that are clearing and maintaining the area.
Okay. Let's get back to the liquor license.
I'm just curious, you know, I like burgers.
Yeah.
New places to eat.
So you met with Lieutenant Hayes. Can you tell us some of the Brookline-specific requirements?
Well, I know the binder is an important thing. We'll keep it ready, available for inspection. We'll keep it current and up to date. All of the employees will be tip certified and serve safe certified, allergen awareness certified, regardless of whether they're working retail or bar. There may be some cross usage of employees, so everybody needs to be certified in all those areas.
And what's going to be your carding policy?
Trash?
Card.
Oh, carding. I'm sorry, guys, but everybody.
You're gonna card me too?
We're gonna card you.
Okay. That seems to be the trend.
I think that's a good idea. You can't tell who's different colors.
And of course, you heard from the last applicant, we do stings, and we don't want to see you here again for this.
You won't.
You can come back, but not for that.
Okay.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there is anyone from the public who wishes to speak for or against this application, please stand now or forever hold your peace. So any comments, questions from the board? Ready for a motion? Okay. I'll move that we approve the application of Phoenix Rising Enterprises LLC doing business as Best Burger. John Messia, manager, for a license to expose, keep, for sale, and sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises, as a seven-day common vitula license at 195 Washington Street with a seating capacity of 40 inside seats and 18 outside seats, hours of operation Monday to Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Friday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Liquor hours, the same, serving brunch on Sundays at 10:00 a.m. This is the formal location of the Middle Gray LLC and doing business as Middle Gray Gallery Cafe. This license, stock, beneficial interest, and inventory is pledged to Middle Gray LLC. That's the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Selectman Franco.
Aye.
Selectman Heller.
Aye.
Selectman Green.
Aye.
Selectman Hamilton.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay. We are right on time, actually three minutes early. So this is a joint meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals to talk about the implications of the temporary safe harbor granted to the town under General Law's Chapter 40B. Welcome, welcome. I don't think we've ever done this. Yeah. This is, yeah, this is good stuff. So the Zoning Board of Appeals has been really the front lines of our onslaught of Chapter 40B applications, and the demands on the board have been phenomenal. You guys have been meeting multiple times a week, up from, I don't know, one or two times a month. Well, maybe more. And these applications tend to be controversial. They tend to have a lot of interest, a lot of passion, and seeing how you guys operate with that interest, with that pressure, it's phenomenal, and I really admire how you've been handling grace under pressure. And I guess this board owes your board, both collectively and individually, a big, big thank you. So why don't you guys go around and introduce yourselves?
Jesse Keller.
Mark Zerall.
Judy Matty.
Chris Fuzzy.
Ann Schreiber.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Perhaps you'd allow the Chair to call the ZBA to order.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Alex.
Set me straight.
We are opening this meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is a joint meeting with various selectmen and a zoning board. How's that all?
Okay. So I guess we're going to turn it over to Judy Barrett, or how are we doing this?
My name is Judy Barrett. And I've been working with the Board of Appeals here, as I think most of you know, kind of off and on, for what, a year at least or so, perhaps even longer than that? I've lost track. As a consultant from the Massachusetts Housing Partnership, I don't work for MHP. I'm on a consultant's list. I had the privilege of working with this board. Mr. Chairman, I'm really happy to hear you thank them because we wouldn't even be having this discussion tonight if the board had not, in its various, you know, combinations of members, worked so hard to go through a number of comprehensive permits that would leave most towns head spinning. And they just did it with absolute grace and exactly what the statute, I think, intends for a Board of Appeals to do, which is to give every case a fair shake. So I thank you, and I really just felt privileged to get to work with this board. So I was asked tonight to come in and kind of explain what housing certification means and what the implications are for the town, and certainly for the board as well. Some of what I'm going to talk about, you will be familiar with, but not knowing who might be here tonight, I wanted to just give a little bit of background information, so just bear with me. There's a legal framework for these cases that come before the Board of Appeals. The statutory framework is in what's called Chapter 40B. We think Chapter 40B is just the comprehensive permit law, which is the vehicle for a Board of Appeals to do sort of a uniform or consolidated permit for housing that includes units that are affordable to low and moderate income people. The reality is that Chapter 40B is actually the regional planning law in Massachusetts, and a lot of people kind of forget that. But that is why this piece is in where it is. It's because it's part of a regional framework to ensure equity within metropolitan areas in terms of people having choices about where they'll live. In addition to the statute, there are state regulations, which are codified at 760 Code of Mass Regs 56. And I'm going to talk a little bit about the relationship between these two things as I go on. But both of those, we all sort of have to be conscious of when we work with so-called Chapter 40B. In addition to these entities with sort of legal weight, there are also policy guidelines that are adopted by the Department of Housing and Community Development. And I will try not to fall back too much on acronyms in this, so if I do, you can feel free to stop me. But DHCD is the agency with administrative responsibility for Chapter 40B. There's also sort of, you know, entities that have some authority if there's an appeal. If the developer's unhappy, the Housing Appeals Committee gets involved, there are appeals to the Superior Court, through the Mass Appeals Court and the Supreme Judicial Court. There have been a number of Chapter 40B cases that have made it to either the Appeals Court or the SJC. We look to all of this, the regulations, the statute, the guidelines, and the history of case law for guidance about how to work with comprehensive permits today. Under Chapter 40B, a community is presumed to have unmet needs for affordable housing if less than 10% of its year-round housing is on the subsidized housing inventory. And I'll explain kind of what this means. That 10% is based on the most recent decennial census count. So whatever happens between Census 2010 and Census 2020 won't catch up with you until Census 2020. The 10% is a statutory minimum. Today, your town is at 9.34%, in part because of this incredible effort by the Board of Appeals over the last year or so, but also because there had been a base of affordable housing here on which to build as well. So your town is very close to that 10% minimum, but not there yet. There are other statutory minimas that involve measurements of land. I'm not going to go there too far tonight, except there is quite a bit of activity going on in Massachusetts right now about a standard called the 1.5% rule, which is an argument that a community can make to say that even if we're not at the 10% unit minimum of low and moderate income housing, if our low and moderate income units in our town occupy at least 1.5% of our land area that is available for residential, commercial, or industrial development, we would be deemed to have the same status as a community that had over 10% of its units being lower moderate income. There's quite a bit of litigation going on about that right now. But since I'm here to talk about a housing production plan, I'm actually going to focus on the 10% minimum, because that's really what a housing production plan is all about. If you have questions about 1.5%, I'll deal with them later. So, you know, this sort of statutory framework is that 10% rule, but over time, the state has adopted regulations to create what are called safe harbors. And a safe harbor is sort of an interim way of saying, we're working toward the 10%, and we've made kind of leaps and bounds progress because of one of these, well, three of these, three of these activities. And the fourth one is not really so much about production, but about fairness. A housing production plan is the first safe harbor I want to talk about. It's the one that's relevant here tonight. If a community creates a housing production plan that meets the state's Chapter 40B guidelines and the state approves that plan, then if you create units under that plan that achieve a certain numeric goal within a calendar year, you become eligible for what's called housing plan certification. And at that point, as I will explain a little more later, that gives the Board of Appeals some authority that is otherwise a little bit difficult to attain. There's also this standard called the recent progress rule, which even if you don't have a housing production plan, if you create a certain number of units in a given year, you get a sort of a one-year reprieve as well. That's a higher standard that has to be met than the standard, the numeric production standard under a housing production plan. Then there's this concept called a large-scale project, which is that a project over a certain number of units would be deemed too large for a community based on its year-round housing stock. That's a fairly high number for you, folks. I think we, 592 or something like that? 524? That's a big number. So if you, you know, if you manage to get a project that came in for that scale, the board could turn it down and not have its decision overturned by the Housing Appeals Committee. The reality is that the subsidizing agencies that review these projects before they ever get to you, they would tell a developer, you're going to trigger this problem and you probably should scale back your project. And then finally, there's this other safe harbor provision called related applications, which is that if a developer comes in to your town for approval under some aspect of your zoning and is turned down by the Planning Board or the Board of Appeals, they can't just sort of come running back with a Chapter 40B permit, a comprehensive permit, and say, gotcha. There is this sort of cooling off period built into the regulations of at least a 12-month period before they can come in. So, but there has to be an actual action by one of the permitting authorities. So safe harbor essentially means that you're at 10%, at least for a little while. It means that if the Board of Appeals decided to turn down an application that came in, if you met one of these requirements, then the board's decision would not be overturned by the Housing Appeals Committee. So it's a way of encouraging communities to kind of, you know, work away at this. Everybody has a role in local government in some way, shape, or form with comprehensive permits. The selectmen, for example, review what's called a project eligibility letter when it's referred to you by a subsidizing agency. The Planning Board provides a review to the Board of Appeals if an application comes in. But ultimately, there are two key parties here. One is the state subsidizing agency, and the other is the Board of Appeals. Those are really the sort of key players in the comprehensive permit process. And the subsidizing agencies have a very important role, under the statute, actually, because before anyone can come to the Board of Appeals and say, give me a comprehensive permit, they have to go through a review process with a subsidizing agency and come out of that with what's called a project eligibility letter, which I know you're all very familiar with in Brookline. The subsidizing agencies also get involved after the board is done. There's some additional steps that are involved before the developer gets what's called final approval. And then when the project's done, there's a cost certification process that is supposed to occur in order to show that the developer did not end up with excess profit. There's an affordable housing restriction that is supposed to protect the affordability of units for some term, or perhaps even in perpetuity. The restrictions vary. And of course, the Housing Appeals Committee is the entity to which the developer may go if the board makes a decision that the developer is unhappy with. Board of Appeals has authority, or responsibilities and authority, both under the statute and the regulations. And one is to have local rules, to receive valid comprehensive permit applications, to conduct a fair and impartial hearing, which, when you have a lot of angry people, can be difficult, but your board has done an amazing job with this process, to reach a decision and file it with the town clerk within a period that's prescribed by law, and then to receive requests that might come in later from an approved project for some kind of modification of the permit. Modifications are not uncommon in this business. And part of that is because when the developer comes to the board, they're not required to have detailed construction drawings. It's really, it's called a preliminary plan. So sometimes things change between the preliminary plan approval and the readiness to go and apply for a building permit. There are these deadlines that relate to this housing production plan issue. There are these deadlines that relate to this housing production plan issue. I'm going to get into in a minute. These are deadlines your board knows really well. When an application comes in, it has to be distributed within a week. There's a public hearing notice that has to run twice. The hearing must open within 30 days unless the developer gives you written consent to extend that date. So this is an accelerated process. It's a unified process. The board has 180 days to conduct the hearing unless the applicant agrees to an extension. The decision has to be filed within 40 days of closing the hearing, and there's an appeal period for 20 days. Now, this safe harbor thing is something I want to focus your attention on, because this really affects the board on a going-forward basis while your housing certification plan is in place. If an applicant comes to the board and the board believes it has the authority to deny an application, the board needs to give the applicant notice of that within 15 days of opening the hearing. And typically, it's done, frankly, the night the hearing opens, just to make sure you don't have a problem with the 15 days. But if someone comes in now for a comprehensive permit while the certification is in effect and the board thought that it could turn down an application, you would need to give the developer notice, saying, we think we can turn you down. The developer can say, I don't think you can, and contest that determination by the board. And then the Department of Housing and Community Development has 30 days to review the dispute and will typically then issue a decision to the board, either saying, you're absolutely right, your housing plan is certified, you have authority to turn this down, or they'll say to the developer, you know, you're absolutely right, they're not really certified after all, or whatever. So there's a way to sort of, you know, mediate that dispute, and then the board goes forward with the hearing. And at that point, the 180 days begins. So there is this structure here for the permit process. Much of it is from statute, but some of it is in regulation as well. Okay? And that safe harbor concept of having an obligation to notify the developer that you think you can turn them down is a key part of the safe harbor process. So if one comes in while your certification's in place and you have any sense at all that you might turn it down, give them the notice, even if you're not going to turn it down, because what you don't want to do is run into a dispute later over whether the board did not follow proper procedure under the regulations. Okay? If you have questions about, let me just get through these slides, and I can take questions. As your board well knows, there are certain actions the board can take with respect to a comprehensive permit. They can deny it, certification or not. Board can deny. They can approve an application as it's submitted, or they can, most commonly, approve it with some set of conditions. And that's a lot of what the board worked on with the various projects that came in over the last many months, was just to try to sort of hammer out, well, what would be valid conditions of approval? The reason that boards try to focus on approval with conditions rather than denial is that if it goes to the Housing Appeals Committee, it is much harder to sustain a denial than it is approval with conditions. So you try to sort of go there if you can. I mean, if a project is just a disaster and there's no way to condition it in a reasonable way, then you deny it. But that's sort of like your last, your last resort, if you will. The developer can appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee if the town, you know, doesn't meet, as I said, one of the statutory minima. So if you deny and you're under 10%, the developer can go to the Housing Appeals Committee. Or if one of those regulatory safe harbors doesn't apply and you deny, they can go to the Housing Appeals Committee. Otherwise, while this, while you have some safe harbor status, they can go to the Housing Appeals Committee, but the decision of the board will be sustained. At least, that's what our regulations tell us. Housing production plans, this is a new name, but this goes way back. I'm old enough to remember the special commission on 40B in 1989, and they made a number of recommendations. This was a legislative commission that was organized because of upset about Chapter 40B in the 1980s. And there's a timing issue in all of this, too. You should all know that toward the end of a 10-year cycle, and at the very beginning of the next one, is always when there tends to be a lot of Chapter 40B angst. First, because when the new census count comes out, people's percentages change. And I'm old enough to remember, when a lot of those percentages fell because of the market had picked up and developers were watching communities that had sewer service and strong markets. So right around the time that there's sort of a change, that's when communities tend to start, we start, tend to hear a lot of concern about Chapter 40B. Anyway, the special commission worked for a few years in the 1980s and recommended, among other things, that the state try to come up with some ways to offer communities incentives to work toward the 10% instead of treating every comprehensive permit like it's a club over the town. And so out of that process came two recommendations, one of which survived long-term and the other did not. One was to establish a program where communities could have units count on the subsidized housing inventory without a comprehensive permit. Your community has experience with this because you have inclusionary zoning. So units that are created not under a comprehensive permit become eligible for the subsidized housing inventory, which is the official roster of Chapter 40B eligible units, because you have inclusionary zoning, and it is through this program called the Local Initiative Program that those units count. That is directly from the special commission in 1989. The other thing the special commission created and suggested in 1989 was to encourage communities to do a plan, because one of the complaints was, we're having 40Bs end up in places we don't want them, and why isn't anybody listening to us? And so the commission said, well, you should let communities do a plan. That lived for about two years in the regulations, and then mysteriously, it went away for the rest of the 1990s. It came back again shortly after 2000, because a new census had come out. Couple of other things happened at the same time, and there was a real spike in comprehensive permit activity. And so DHCD reintroduced this concept of a housing plan that is the genesis of what you have today. It was called plan production for a while. Now it's called a housing production plan, and has been called that since 2008. But the principle was the same throughout. The idea was, you do some planning, communities, instead of just complaining at the subsidizing agencies and complaining at developers, you do some planning about where you actually want to have affordable housing or mixed-income housing built, and then go do it. So that was the sort of directive, if you will. Housing Production Plan 101, there are three key components. You guys know this because you have one now. It's a housing needs analysis, it's a set of goals, and an implementation strategy. It goes through an approval process with DHCD. Yours went through a miraculously fast approval process last October. That was like an amazing moment. I think they approved it in like 10 days or something. So, you know, so then the burden is on you to start implementing it. And that's where the Board of Appeals becomes really sort of a key player again, because if you're going to reach one of those numerical goals, which in your case is 131 or 262, I believe, units, that's a lot of work to do. It's really hard. And if you meet one of those goals, then you become eligible for what's called certification. That is where that safe harbor status kicks in. So you have a one-year certification right now, because the board granted enough comprehensive permits within the same calendar year to produce 131 or a few more, actually, units for the subsidized housing inventory. So now you have this certification. The whole purpose of having a housing production plan is to get to the 10% minimum. That's the whole point, or to get to it or beyond it. There are these other points as well, to gain more control over permits, to manage the pace of housing growth, to encourage towns to produce housing, and to help, or it should help, the Board of Appeals. So one of the things the Board of Appeals can do in reviewing a comprehensive permit application is to look at the housing plan and at least sort of ask, in what ways is this consistent with our plan? You may not want to deny a comprehensive permit for outright inconsistency with the plan, but it certainly should give you some basis for perhaps trying to negotiate with developers. It's a plan. If it isn't going to have any legs, then what's the point? So the board can use that plan, as well as other agencies of the town, in trying to work toward the 10%. The point of a housing production plan is not to stop 40B applications. I need to make this really clear. I'm probably, just don't shoot the messenger tonight, guys, because I'm not going to try to dress this up. It is not to stop comprehensive permits. It's to get housing built in your community. It's not to create needless delays in the permitting process, and it's not to sort of sit back and do nothing for 12 or 24 months. I just need to, the point is to produce affordable housing. Otherwise, the whole housing production plan scheme would be inconsistent with the statute. And the purpose of the statute is to build affordable housing. So the plan is a vehicle for a community to try to influence that process, not to stop it. Your housing production plan was approved in October. The plan is certified from March 23rd. This, excuse me, I got those, I got those dates right, 23rd to the 17th, 2018. I was stopping myself for a minute, Allison. I forgot, this is 2017 now. So your minimum certification goals, as you know, were 131 units for one year. That's what you have now. If you, the board happened to approve 262 units in the same calendar year, then you would have, be eligible for a two-year certification. There's not an opportunity to do more than two years at a time, which has gotten a few communities sort of caught. I'll talk about that if I need to. So where you are right now, these numbers will be familiar to some in the room, perhaps not everyone. According to the Census, the Census Bureau, in 2010, you had 26,201 year-round housing units. The Chapter 40B minimum, therefore, is 2620. Your existing subsidized housing inventory is 2,438 units, so your gap is 182. By gap, I mean the difference between what you have and what that 10% obligation would be. So there are a couple of options to think about in terms of extending the certification, if that's what you choose to do. You would need to, in order to sort of extend that period, you would need to do at least 90 units between now and the end of December. Or if you weren't able to do all that within a single calendar year, then next year, you need to focus on another 131 units. And meanwhile, the certification would lapse on March 22nd, 2018. There's a potential for about 170, 180 units right now in applications that are actually live before the board. Those applications came in prior to the eligibility for certification, so the board has to continue to treat those as though there was no housing production plan. The status of any application that came in prior to the date of certification is a valid comprehensive permit, and it's not subject to any safe harbor requirements. Need to make that clear as well. People often ask, well, how does the whole, when do things count? Comprehensive permit units count on the subsidized housing inventory and for housing plan certification when the board's decision is filed with the town clerk. There can be a few exceptions to this, but that's basically when the units count. If there is no building permit within 12 months for units that are under a valid comprehensive permit, the units will be removed from the subsidized housing inventory. No building permit in 12 months, the units come off. It could affect housing plan certification, depending on how many excess units you had. Once units are removed from the subsidized housing inventory, they'll be restored when there's finally a building permit issued, but they won't count again toward a new housing plan certification. You don't get to double count. So if units came off the inventory because there wasn't a building permit in 18 months and they didn't come back on for another year, you don't get to count those another year from now toward a new housing plan certification. They're eligible for housing plan certification once. Okay? Just want to make that clear. So, you know, the board has choices for applications, and I want to make this really clear. I'm talking about applications that might come in after, while the certification is alive. You could just say no, as long as you give them notice within 15 days, you know, of opening the hearing. Give them written notice and say, we think we can deny you because. Or you can go forward. And we've had communities do that. I actually worked with, as a technical assistant consultant with a board in another town that had a small project come in during the certification period, and they liked the project, and they liked the location, and they approved it. So you can go forward as though there's no certification and whatever. You can try to work with the applicant and other interested parties to arrive at some compromise and reach a decision and file it, and just keep going. You don't have to not take permits during the certification period. What it does is it gives you some latitude to say no that otherwise is difficult to do. Is this clear? You know, I think some issues you're going to want to wrestle with here, just from what I've seen, is, you know, is it realistic to actually permit 90 more units in 2017? Is it realistic to permit another 131 next year? I think you want to want to balance the desire to sort of keep certification with the desire that I think the board has wrestled with in every single project that's come before them. How do you get the best possible project for the town and neighborhoods? And that could come into conflict with wanting to play that numbers game. So it's a policy issue you're going to have to wrestle with. And what do you think is the best possible outcome? Is it, is it trying to sort of not have another comprehensive permit come through the door that you don't want? Or is it getting good developments? And not that those are mutually exclusive, but they could be. And then what would be the worst outcome? That you're over 10%? I don't know. Those are decisions you guys are going to have to make. But I think these are kind of issues that you're going to want to think about between now and the end of your certification period, is what's realistic, what's appropriate? Do you chase numbers because you actually have good opportunities to do so, or because you're just trying to keep a certification? And perhaps at what expense to some neighborhood do you do that? These are big issues that I think you're going to need to wrestle with. So those are my, those are my slides. That's really all I have to say.
Yeah, I think, you know, one thing we have to think about, I guess, both boards, is the certification is good for at most a year, and it could be less if units come off. And, and I think we're kind of expecting some units to come off in all likelihood. And I think we have to be thinking about, you know, March 23rd, 2018, because we could be back in the same pickle that we were in prior to certification. So what I've been saying every chance I can get is, this is not a license for us to just say no. If we, if we get a project through the door, we should think about, you know, do we like the project? Can we improve the project? Can we make the project one that we could live with, one that could be an asset to the community and help us get, get to the goal? Though we haven't seen, since certification, we haven't seen any projects come in the door.
I think everybody's probably waiting. I suspect.
Okay.
So we have a housing production plan. What plans does the town have, other than comprehensive permits to produce housing that would help us reach that goal?
Well, good question. I, I, maybe I'll look to Roger to help me with this one. I know we're looking at some small-scale projects, such as the Kent Street Senior Housing Project, but do we have?
And I'll just, while Roger's coming up here, I'll just point out.
I know, we're also working with, you know, the Hancock Village Settlement, which should get us another 148 units on the SHI, but beyond that, I don't think we have anything in the works.
Something you should know, just for your own information, is that there's a privileging that goes on in terms of when units count.
Right.
If they're in a comprehensive permit, they count the day the board's decision's filed with the town clerk, even if there's an appeal.
Right.
It's just that if there's no building permit in 12 months, they're going to come off. But if they're in an inclusionary zoning project, they're not eligible right away.
When does it come out?
When there's a building permit, and then you have to follow it up with evidence of a certificate of occupancy. So there can be a significant delay between the approval of a project by the Board of Appeals or the Planning Board and when the state actually counts.
So it's the building permit for a, let's say, looking at Hancock Village, which is going to be, assuming the settlement goes through, will that be a lip?
I would assume it would be. It was called local action units as a component of the Local Initiative Program.
Okay. So it'll go on the SHI when the building permit is issued?
That is what the regulations say, but regulations also say there has to be a certificate of occupancy within six months thereafter.
That's a pretty aggressive.
It is.
That's aggressive.
Right. So, you know, you just, I just want you to have this information, that there's nothing wrong with pursuing non-comprehensive permit opportunities. You shouldn't do that.
Right.
But the units may not count as quickly as they will if they're in a comprehensive permit. And there's been a lot of discussion about this. Many of us are not happy about that policy, but it exists. The one exception is a Chapter 40R development, the so-called, you know, I don't want to call it smart growth. The housing production bill under Chapter 40R, those site plan approval decisions will cause units to count as though they were a comprehensive permit, but that's the only exception I'm aware of.
Could I just ask a question about the units counting? So when the housing authority built its units, new units on Egmont Street, have those been counted?
Dumber.
I mean, dumber, I'm sorry.
Yes, those units are on the SHI.
Okay. And when did they, when did they get on the SHI? Do they get, did we have to have the certificate of occupancy first, or? Because those weren't under 40B. Or, because those weren't under 40B.
No, I do know housing staff had to pursue and make sure that those units were in fact placed on the SHI. But in terms of the timing, I just don't remember.
Interesting. Yeah?
Judy, I think it's important for, I have two questions and two classifications. You said that they don't count until a certificate of occupancy is issued, six months after approval. And no project is built in six months. How is that possible?
That's, I mean, just, remember when I said earlier, "Don't shoot the messenger"? I'm just telling you what the regulations say. My experience is, if there's a building permit that's been issued for a large project, they're more flexible. What they don't want to see is a building permit issued, and then nothing has happened six months later, and nothing's happened 12 months later. But they want to know the unit exists and that it's occupied. I understand. I do understand. Sometimes for very large projects, they will agree upfront. You know, you wouldn't want to like wait till the end to find this out. But sometimes for very large projects, they will agree to extend that 12 months to 18 months. But that's the, most the regulations provide for.
And then, while I was pointing to classification, you know that, excuse me, we approved a project of, say, 40 units. Only 25% of them are actually affordable. But how many units are actually counted?
If it's a rental development, all of the units count. If 25% are affordable to moderate-income households or 20% are affordable to low-income households. If it's a rental development, all of the units count. If it's a homeownership development, only the homeownership units count. Yeah, that's a good point.
Right, yeah. And one of the things that's happened is the market has, for various reasons, has gotten more favorable for rentals. So we have benefited from that because in years past, we were seeing mostly condo development. And we didn't get quite that high-octane punch, so to speak. Steve?
What's Brookline's status with respect to the 1.5% rule?
The planning department does monitor it, but unfortunately, we're not close.
It would take a fair amount of rezoning.
Well, construction, too.
Right, yeah. Rezoning plus. Yeah. Any other questions? This was interesting. You know, the creation of affordable housing, I think, is really important. You know, more and more, Brookline is becoming a kind of a a town of very wealthy and not so very wealthy. And the creation of affordable housing kind of helps maintain that level of economic diversity that we seem to be losing. So, you know, in, when I moved into town 30 years ago, you know, three-deckers were still kind of, well, if not blue-collar, working-class, you know, it was kind of starting to edge out towards, you know, a higher socioeconomic group. But I think it's really gone the other way. And in three-deckers, you know, an apartment can be, you know, $500, $600, $700,000. And in a three-decker, that, in the '70s, sold for, you know, $60,000 for the whole building. It's pretty amazing, the changes that have happened to the market.
Good evening. The question that was raised a few minutes ago about what's the town doing specifically to advance affordable housing production that might fit the calendar that Judy Barrett mentioned, this calendar year and next calendar year. You mentioned Chairman Wacinski, the Kent Station Street municipally-owned parking lot, which has a selectmen-appointed committee that is in the early stages of determining whether that's a feasible place for senior affordable housing, which would be rental and could be 40 or 50 units. But I think the point there is that the lead time on those initiatives is so long for the public process, for getting the tax credits or other subsidies, that that type of thing is unlikely to assist us to get to the safe harbor. The same would be true with non-town-owned properties, such as the River Road area, which includes the potential for significant affordable housing. But again, that's a private owner, and that would be several years, I think, in coming. The housing production plan itself, which Judy described, I think, very well, doesn't identify or set a particular set of sites or timeframes where something is going to get built. It basically meets the state requirements and identifies certain corridors or areas in town that the town would encourage and be friendly if a private landowner came with a proposal relative to other parts of town that they wouldn't be so friendly. So the, I think the realistic focal points for potentially either of these calendar years, particularly next year, probably lies in the area where there's project processes going on, such as what's happening at Coolidge Corner, where the Safe Harbor gives the town, and likewise with the Holiday Inn, some opportunity to shape and make something a lot better there that might have an opportunity to reach potentially a permit and help us with our inventory in a way that the town would like a lot better than what was originally proposed there before we had the Safe Harbor.
Allison?
If I could just follow up. In terms of timeframe, I fully expect it will hit the 10% within the next few years, hopefully sooner rather than later. But when the federal census comes in, our SHI will go down, potentially below 10%. So we have to plan for that as well. So we have to take a longer-term approach.
Right. So all this is very sobering. And I guess the message to, I guess, the whole community is just because we hit the certification, yes, it was a milestone, yes, it was hard. It's meaningful, but it's not a license to just say no because it's temporary. And when we come out of it, we're going to be in the same position we were in just a few months ago. Yeah?
Ms. Steinfeld, I wanted to ask about, I know that in the past, in the more recent future, we've been much firmer about requiring the apartments to remain on affordable in perpetuity. But that wasn't always the case. So for Dexter Park, for instance, you know, we let it, it went off the SHI. So how many of those do we have that we're going to lose? Because do we know that number?
We monitor what is called expiring uses. And these go, these go back to probably the '60s and '70s. One is the Drucker Building, the other is the Wynn property in the Village. And we work to protect those units. From my perspective, the first priority is not protecting our SHI, but protecting the tenants. And we've been successful in doing that, certainly with Wynn and also with the Drucker property.
So is Wynn now in perpetuity or not?
No, those are eventually falling off. But we've extended the timeframe and protecting a lot of, protecting all the residents.
I think the next wave of expiring uses in the 2030s, I seem to recall. It's a ways out.
It's a, yeah. But we do monitor it. And quite honestly, the ZBA is diligent in all the recent comprehensive permits. A condition has been that the units shall be maintained as affordable in perpetuity.
Right, I'm aware of that.
Right.
But I'm just worried about the ones that are going to expire. And will our inclusionary zoning provisions be enough to ensure that we get units to replace those?
Well, first of all, our inclusionary bylaw doesn't necessarily require units. There are other ways of doing it. They can be off-site, they can also be money. And the few inclusionary units, few projects that are subject to our inclusionary zoning bylaw that are before us are not going to produce units.
Right. And also, not all the units.
Maybe we have to rethink, maybe we have to think about that.
Not all the units.
Because we want to remain, we want to keep the 10%.
Yeah.
That's the goal.
Right.
So that we can have some control. You know, we're happy to produce affordable housing, but we want affordable housing that meets our neighborhoods and our zoning. So how do we keep enough units on the SHI once we get to the 10%? That's, I think, going to be a big question.
Well, I do think Hancock Village, in one way or another, will be, provide us a safety net in that regard. I also think it might be time for the town and the Housing Advisory Board to take another look at our inclusionary zoning bylaw. I'm not saying it warrants amending, but we should look at it to see if it could be improved, to create more units. Because quite honestly, creating housing in Brookline is so expensive. You know, contribution to the trust fund doesn't necessarily go that far. So we might want to think about encouraging creation of units, either onsite or at least within Brookline.
So what's the inclusionary zoning bylaw saying now? It's 15% or 20%?
15%, but 10% is 80% AMI. And then 5% is 100% AMI. And the 100% units don't count towards the subsidized housing inventory.
Right, then. I just want to go back for a second to the, to Swakman-Hellers. I'll let you go, Roger, and then I'll.
Yeah, so it is, it is 15%. But the only time that money can be given is in the very small projects, up to 15 units. Anything of any size requires the units to be onsite. So the, if the smaller projects required onsite units instead of money, the count is, would be very insignificant. On the other hand, the trust fund, which has raised a number of millions of dollars over the years, primarily from those very small projects, that's what's enabled us to do things like St. Aden's and Dummer Street, and recently, the JCHE, which have real volume of units where we are able to use that trust fund money instead of very small counts to leverage and get the state inferral money in to do really sizable, significant numbers of units that do go on the inventory. And so if you look at the count, I think for the, as a policy matter, the use of the, getting the money from the very small projects has been very productive in terms of getting permanent inventory.
Anything else?
I just want to dig in for one second on what Ms. Steinfeld said about expiring uses. It was a little bit unclear to me whether your department is monitoring just the units that have been sort of protected for some period of time as a result of a zoning change, or whether you're also tracking the expiring uses as a result of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development's subsidy of mortgages that were done 30 or 40 years ago.
We monitor all projects on the SHI. And the SHI will identify what are expiring uses and what aren't. So for whatever reason, we monitor the expiring uses on the SHI. Does that answer your question?
Yes, good.
So on the housing production plan, and as we all know, most of the comprehensive permits focus on North Brookline, to its detriment. And a lot of that is because of the public transportation infrastructure, which exists. So I'm wondering what the town can do to change infrastructure or add infrastructure to other parts of town, which will make it more attractive to allow subsidized housing to be built there and take some pressure off North Brookline because it's dying under the stress. I mean, who has the power to say, "Okay, we need another bus route"? Who has the power to?
Yeah, that's, you know, the MBTA and its advocacy with the MBTA.
So we routinely advocate for improved public transportation services. Quite frankly, it doesn't do us a whole lot of good. We've said the 51 bus needs to run more than once an hour. We need to increase capacity on the 66 line. The 60 bus needs to come more than twice an hour during rush hour. Green line service is inadequate. It needs to be increased as a result of not only existing units, but also increased units. You see what the result has been. So we're fighting that fight. But we need as much help as we can get. So anybody that's listening, tell your state representative, your state senator, call the governor and say, "The MBTA needs to do a better job, and we need to have more service than we have today."
Transportation access may have a real role to play in that. But I work in a lot of communities with no public transportation, and they're still getting hit with Chapter 40B developments. So how much of it is transportation infrastructure or services? And how much of it is just a constellation of redevelopment-ready sites? I don't know. But I think, you know, it's a market-driven law at this point because there's no subsidy left. So where people are going to find market opportunities is where they're going to go.
Yep. One more question.
Okay, so one of my frustrations with 40B is that when we do a great development like the JCHE development on Harvers Street, the elderly development, which the trust fund participated in, it's 100% affordable and only 100, and 100% of the units count. But in the neighboring projects, only 20%, 20% of the units are affordable. Of course, 100% count. But still, it feels like we're not really getting the same value because we are building 100% affordable units. And they should count more than the projects that do only 20%. But I don't know whether the state has any ideas about.
This has been under debate for 30 years, honest with you. I mean, that's how far I go back. But, I mean, there are a couple of reasons why 100% of the units count in rental developments. One is that the state, as a matter of policy, wants to encourage communities to not fight rental housing all the time.
Oh, I'm happy with the 100%. I'm not saying we, what I'm saying is that the ones that are truly 100% affordable should count as 150%.
Yeah, but they won't. Because they're not going to, they're not going to make a unit count for more than a unit. So it really comes down to, do we count all the units in a rental development or not? And I haven't seen any movement on that at all. I know about 10 years ago, there was some discussion about changing the rules for homeownership developments to make more of those units count. And that never went anywhere either. So, but again, there's just, there's two reasons for all the units counting in a rental development. One is this policy to encourage. And the other is that, in most rental developments, the affordable units move. Because the, it's very difficult to say, "I'm going to have these 10 units be affordable, and everything else is market when people come and go." So your affordable rental units may be in certain locations at the beginning of a project, but they may move as people come and go. So how do you then say that unit's affordable and this one is not?
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And thank you for all the hard work. And thank you for getting us the certification.
Thanks to the planning department, too.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing and possible vote on the special town meeting Article I, a resolution in support of a congressional investigation regarding the impeachment of President Donald J... I won't say his name. So who's, who's going to present?
My name's Alex Bornswale. I live at 97 Sewell Avenue. This is my.
Oh, I'm Lisa Kalerik. I'm the other petitioner.
Co-filer. So we also, we didn't know if you had your own sign-up sheet, but we did create a sign-up sheet for other people who want to speak. If you want. So we have that.
Thank you.
And do you have, do you have copies of the resolution? Or would you like me to bring those up?
We have copies, yeah. And we also have what the advisory committee did.
Okay, great. Does anybody have another copy?
You ready?
Sure.
Okay, great. Lisa Kalerik and I, and the 429 petitioners. Lisa Kalerik and I and the 429 petitioners did not ask for this special meeting and bring this resolution before you because we want to obstruct a president whom we find distasteful. If it were only a matter of personality, politics, and policies, we would stick to opposing him in the political realm. Our concerns go much deeper. We bring this resolution for one reason and one reason only. Our president is violating the Constitution and Congress is not doing its job of enforcing I'd like to stop right now and invite the folks who are here supporting the resolution to stand up so that you can see. We had, we had over 450 signers, 429 of them were, thank you, were certified. And we collected all those signatures in, on two rainy days of a weekend that, it was frankly, really easy. So what we want is for Brookline to call on Congress and specifically our member of Congress to begin an investigation to determine if there are grounds for impeachment of the president, specifically whether he's violated the emoluments clauses of the Constitution. Given the events of the last week, though, I want to call your attention to the end of the first resolved clause, which directs, quote, "The House Committee on the Judiciary to investigate whether sufficient grounds exist for the impeachment of Donald J. Trump, President of the United States, including but not limited to the violations listed herein." But I'm going to stick for the rest of my comments to the emoluments clause violations. As you will have learned from reading the resolution, the emoluments clauses of the Constitution were developed by the framers to prevent an office holder, especially the president, from personally profiting from his office or from being influenced by personal financial interest. What we have is a president who appears to be doing both. Think about the Dakota Access Pipeline. Trump owns an interest in the parent company of the pipeline developer. As soon as he got into office, he reversed the decision of the Army Corps of Engineers and restarted work on the pipeline. Think of Trump Tower, whose largest tenant is the state-owned industrial and commercial Bank of China. That same bank is a major lender to the Trump Organization. Thus, he receives both rent and credit from this entity owned by the Chinese government. Think of all his golf courses, hotels, condo developments, and all of the permits that they need to build and operate. Think of all the regulations that affect them. How can we be sure that the Trump administration's policies are not influenced by the Trump Organization's financial interests? How can we be sure that state and foreign governments won't curry favor with the president through friendly regulation and expedited permits? There are indications that this is already happening. The president's violations of the Constitution are not minor encroachments or small details. They go to the heart of the intentions of the founders, of the framers of the Constitution, to establish a government by, for, and of the people, not by, for, and of the powerful. They were trying to create something new and different from the old European monarchies in which the powerful at all levels sought to enrich themselves at the expense of their people. In fact, the framers of the Constitution specifically identified violations of the emoluments clauses as impeachable offenses. The question before us is really very simple. Do we want to live in a constitutional democracy or not? If we don't stand up for the Constitution, then the social contract is broken. If we allow the President of the United States to violate the Constitution, that Constitution is meaningless. It is only relevant if enforced. We must not accept this level of corruption as business as usual. This is not a partisan issue. It's not about Donald Trump's qualifications or his policies. It's about ensuring the continuation of a democracy based on the Constitution. It's about upholding the rule of law. If Donald Trump is not held accountable, we reverse the longstanding principle that no person is above the law. So you might ask why the town of Brookline should pass this resolution, given that we don't have jurisdiction over the matter. If Congress won't do their job to enforce the Constitution, then it's up to us as citizens, up to cities and towns, up to town meetings, probably one of our most democratic institutions, those institutions closest to the people, to demand that our Constitution be enforced. Furthermore, towns frequently petition their members of Congress to act in their best interests, and I would argue that it's certainly in the best interests of the town of Brookline to have a federal government that operates with integrity and a president who respects the rule of law. It's most definitely not in the town's interest to have a corrupt government that serves the private interests of a president. You might be concerned about repercussions to our town if we pass this resolution, but instead of asking about repercussions, let us ask about consequences. What will happen if we don't enforce the Constitution? How will future generations look at our actions at this critical moment when a president willfully and openly violates the founding document of our republic? Thank you very much.
I would also just like to say a few words. It's sort of background on how we wrote our resolution. And we, Alex and I are not lawyers, so what we did is after hearing a group of very esteemed lawyers present twice in Newton and Jamaica Plain, we, they're a national group called Free Speech for People, we use their online resolutions. We printed them out and it's gone through the advisory committee now. But what I want to really point out is that these group, this group of lawyers are really scholars. And in the last week, Lawrence Tribe from Harvard, he's, you know, probably you read about him in the media all the time, he's quoted, he joined this group, Free Speech for People. He's now on their legal advisory board. And so if you don't mind, I'll just quote what he said recently. His quotes, Lawrence Tribe, that is, is that, "It is now up to Congress to save the Constitution by initiating impeachment proceedings. Trump can't say, you're fired," to the House of Representatives. And he also said ample reasons existed to worry about this president and to ponder the extraordinary remedy of impeachment even before the Comey firing, and that the foreign emoluments clause of the Constitution was bars the president from receiving funds. Oh, that his, it's a brazen defiance. He's, it's a brazen defiance of the foreign emoluments clause. So we feel as though we're just bringing this forward to the town of Brookline, but really it's a national movement started by really well-respected constitutional scholars. And now we would be the fifth town in Massachusetts and, I think, the 10th across the nation to, to pass these resolutions if we do pass them. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's up? I'll just, one thing I'll just say that what I say at every public hearing that we have, if somebody else has said what you're going to say, it's perfectly okay to say, I agree with so-and-so, and then move on to another point. So, you know, we don't have to repeat ourselves over and over again.
Okay. So John might be first.
Sometimes that works.
My name is John Arum. I'm at 20 Chapel Street. Relative newcomer to Brookline. We've just lived here for four years, so compared to a number of people, we're just the new kids on the block.
Welcome.
Thank you. So let me just try and add a little bit of my own experience to this. I was one of the persons that collected signatures on the street corner of Coolidge Corner for a couple of days last month. And I would have to say how appreciative I felt the public was that I talked to, how willing people were to give their signatures, how informed they were about what is happening in this country, and how gratified they were that there was some effort going on that would ask the Congress to do an investigation to find out exactly if there is a constitutional violation or not. So that was a gratifying experience for me. My view is that we are in a constitutional crisis right now. Constitutional crisis being where a large portion of the citizenry are interpreting the Constitution differently than the people in power and feeling that the people in power are violating the norms and the rules of that body that we all live by, that we've all pledged ourselves to live by. So what we're doing is asking for a, an investigation of that, and I feel that when our country is in a constitutional crisis, that we need more democracy rather than less. The administration is trying to close down investigations, trying to deny this information. And what we're asking is more democracy. We want the people involved. We want the Congress to hear our opinions and our strong feelings on this issue. So I would certainly request that your vote in favor of this motion, and I really appreciate your attention tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Cooper. I'm on, live on Tappan Street. I've been here since 1979. I've been relatively apolitical, strangely enough, but this isn't political. I feel like I'm going to fight for our democracy. I'm going to fight for my grandchildren. I know that this question will come up of why Brookline, and people may be thinking that, but Massachusetts is where the revolution started. I think we are here to protect the revolution. That's what this is about. This is a different kind of revolution. And when I've been in these meetings, I felt like this is what it was like 240 years ago when people were fighting for their freedom. I think that's what this is about. I hope that Brookline will stand up and be one of the early ones to be counted in this fight. There's a time for impeachment. This isn't about an impeachment investigation. It's not even the impeachment itself, and I hope you'll be able to recommend this to the town meeting. Thanks.
Good evening. I'm Nora Dooley. I live at Ford White Street, and I'm going to speak to the question of, wouldn't Pence be worse? And I think that it's, it's a fair question to ask and to think about a Pence presidency... Oh, mother.
Well, how we would agree with abortion.
It is, it is certainly true that you could characterize Mike Pence as anti-woman, anti-choice, anti-LGBT, many, has many regressive attributes. However, he does seem, and we would find out, I guess, have respect for democracy and law. At least he has spoken that way. And the idea that a Pence presidency would be worse than Trump is really contradicted by the idea that we could weaken the entire Republican Party by saying, this is wrong. You can't bully the press. You can't have unconstitutional executive orders. These things are not okay. To just let them go and unchecked is such a danger that Mike Pence presidency is certainly something that I, I'm willing to really fight for, to see what that would be like and see where we would have to go as the next step. And I just wanted to add to that, that when, you know, people ask, oh, what are the repercussions of this? The repercussions of colluding with this kind of hurtful policies that are actually hurting people all across the country. I don't know if you realize that in New Jersey, did you read the article about a woman who was opposing a Republican representative, had a letter sent to the bank where she worked saying, hey, she's one of the ringleaders, right? That kind of poisonous activity is the, is the inroads of fascism. It's, I mean, big words and everybody says, you know, you shouldn't get so dramatic, but that's really what we're looking at. And when you have people like the New England Patriots or former New England Patriot, Chris Long, saying, I'm not going to go to the White House and visit with Donald J. Trump because when my son grows up and he asks me, why did you go when you knew it was the wrong thing to do? How am I going to answer him? And when football players are making principled decisions based on our democracy, I think it's perfectly appropriate for us to ask our elected officials on the state, city, town level to make those same kind of decisions and get on the team that we all need to be on, which should likely be called the Patriots. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Barbara Kelman. I've lived in Brookline for 30 years. I live on Buckminster Road. And just a couple of points that haven't been touched on. One important question is, could we be better spending our time working on the campaigns of people in other states to elect Democrats to Congress? And my answer to that is that most of us, or the people I've gotten to know, all, none of whom I knew before this effort, are actually doing that in addition to working on this. My husband held a fundraiser in his office downtown for a guy running for governor in Virginia. We're all very conscious of what else needs to be done. While this has taken up an enormous amount of time, especially for these two, we can do this, do our day jobs and still work on other stuff, and we are. And we agree that it's very important to be looking at other races as well. And secondly, how effective can this be in a Republican Congress? Well, it's not going to be easy, but I'm sure the revolutionaries who we've been talking about tonight didn't say, well, let's just float over to those that land across the ocean. It'll probably be easy to get away from England and King George. It won't be easy. It's not going to happen overnight, but that doesn't mean we don't want to hold these folks accountable. And it doesn't mean that sometimes Republicans don't act in a surprising way. A third of the Judiciary Committee that was asked to investigate Trump voted in favor, or Nixon, I'm sorry, voted in favor of the articles of impeachment for Nixon. So I think we need to remember that some of the folks in Congress who now, who are Republicans, are more moderate Republicans and may listen to what comes from the people around the country. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Alexa Martin, and I live at 20 Clinton Road, and I've lived here for the last year and a half. I moved from Seattle, a pretty liberal area, and chose this area specifically because of the, the community here and the inclusion of everybody. And many of the points were taken before, that what I was going to talk about was repercussions, so I'm going to say that I agree with all, just in interest of time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lynn Chong, and I've lived in Brookline for 10 or so years, and I got in, I was not very politically active until I got very excited come January to look into what was going on. And especially on a night like tonight when we're talking about affordable housing, it seems like this isn't worth our time. Why is Brookline wasting its time on this impeach Trump business when we have housing developments to take care of? We have night schools that may or may not be, you know, built, you know? This is what we really, is really important. But, you know, I, I think it is really important for us to stand up because it's not saying, I mean, what it is saying is, we're going to take a leadership role and we're going to tell our congressman that you've got our support. Because I feel like we've been in touch with the, you know, our congressman, and he's kind of a little weak on this issue. And I think if he saw that more towns were supporting this, that it would give him a little more backbone to support the investigation. So anyway, that's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jean Raif. I live on Stanton Road. I've been here since 2002. I just wanted to comment on your difficulty saying the name we have. I work at the, I'm a musician. I teach at the conservatory, and it's become, the brass instruments have become horn, trombone, tuba, and teepee tee. Anyway, I just wanted to say that today, this afternoon, this slate came out with, the articles suggested a draft for articles of impeachment for Donald J. Trump. And I just wanted to read the first article of several, which we feel is the strongest case for impeachment. Article 1, compromising the integrity of the presidency through continuing violation of the Constitution's emoluments clause. From his first day in office, Trump's continuing stake in trumpet, Trump Organization trumpet businesses has violated the clause of the Constitution prescribing federal officials from receiving foreign payments. The true and full extent of Trump's conflicts of interest remains unknown. For his part, Trump has transferred day-to-day control over these interests to his adult children and the management of the Trump Organization. However, he remains the ultimate beneficiary for these businesses, so the fundamental conflict of interest remains. These foreign business ties violate both the letter and spirit of the Constitution, Constitution's emoluments clause, and arguably provide the clearest basis for impeachment based on the facts and law. So, thanks.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to read the first article of several, which we feel is the strongest case for impeachment. Article one, compromising the integrity of the presidency through continuing violation of the Constitution's Emoluments Clause. From his first day in office, Trump's continuing stake in Trump Organization trumpet businesses has violated the clause of the Constitution prescribing federal officials from receiving foreign payments. The true and full extent of Trump's conflicts of interest remains unknown. For his part, Trump has transferred day-to-day control over these interests to his adult children and the management of the Trump Organization. However, he remains the ultimate beneficiary for these businesses, so the fundamental conflict of interest remains. These foreign business ties violate both the letter and spirit of the Constitution's Emoluments Clause and arguably provide the clearest basis for impeachment based on the facts and law. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Stephanie Bornswal. I've lived in Brookline for about 20 years on Sewell Ave. I'm actually a pretty moderate individual, but I'm very devoted to the rule of law, so this impeachment work really, I think, is very important. And a couple of points I want to make. One is adding to the list of reasons why Brookline should do it. I don't think that before this issue of impeachment came up, that that many people really even understood or thought about what emoluments are. So I think by Brookline carrying on the fight, if you were to approve this and it goes before the Board of Selectmen, the more publicity it has, the more people are brought back to not only supporting the rule of law, but also beginning to understand what it means to have the rule of law. Because I think one thing that came out of -- one thing that's coming out of the Trump presidency, I like to think about the thing I read in New York Times, where he said, "Yes, Trump is definitely making America great again. Look at all the people that are active. Look at all the constitutions that people are now thinking about that we kind of took for granted." So I think that's a really important role that we have, is raising the question at the town level so that people can look at, what does it mean to be an American? I think the other reason is that not only why should we do it, but the why now? And I think because there's some momentum, and people are already talking about it, and we can begin to move, perhaps move, the congressional representative forward, at least to understand that people really care about the issue.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wish to speak?
We agree.
Okay. So I'll bring it into the board. What do you guys think?
I have some thoughts.
Go for it.
I've been down this road before. I remember Reagan. I think some people wanted to impeach him. People wanted to impeach George W. You. They did impeach Clinton, wanted to impeach Obama. It's getting to be sort of how this country operates. A losing party goes to impeach the winning party in the presidential race. And although, you know, I'll probably support this resolution, I support it thinking about the consequences of the possible consequences of doing so. You know, it may be that the Republican Congress would begin impeachment proceedings, given the most recent craziness going on in the administration. Because from their point of view, from their standpoint, having someone more controllable, less crazy in the White House enables a GOP agenda, which is very, very horrific to be implemented, is enhanced. I think we really got to think about that. One of the speakers mentioned the importance of working for congressional races across the country. The impeachment is really not as important as the politics of supporting a change in Congress so that we don't just get rid of the bum, but we have a basis for preventing the massive numbers of bums in the House from just really doing some horrible, horrible things. And by the way, they're doing it now, you know, with the Justice Department's decisions with respect to sentencing, as an example, you know, with the various executive orders that are implementing everything from voter suppression to just environmental degradation. So, you know, I will support this, but, you know, it's more important to me to do the political organizing. This is not political. It's legalistic. But, you know, impeachment is a political process, and in order for it to be successful, there needs to be political action to make sure that, to the extent possible, the House has slipped in 1918 and 2018. And preliminarily, you know, the races that are up now, for example, in Montana and Georgia and others that may come up later on, that we spend a lot of time on those actions as opposed, and not just on this sort of impeachment shiny object.
Well, I agree with some of what Selectmen Green has said, and clearly the political angle is extremely important. We have got to take back the House if we have any hope of really bringing this country to any kind of democracy again. And I say again, I do think we've lost it. I think that he's a madman. He's just -- he's -- it's unspeakable. I mean, I can barely get the words out. He's so awful. And the damage that he's doing, I would add the judiciary to Selectmen Green's list. That can't be undone for many, 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 many years. At the same time, I do think that this provides incredibly valuable education for people. I think even there may be Trump voters out there who would change their minds based on his promoting of his own self-interest, for instance. I think the whole Russian thing, I've always felt from the day he got elected, that if there was going to be any impeachment, it would be on the basis of his collusions with Russia. Because that, I think, most people would view that as treasonous. And so, but I, again, I think it's critically important. We know now, we have facts about the emoluments. I don't -- I think we have some facts about Russia, but maybe not as many as we need. And that may come, and I think that would probably come in the future. But, so I do intend to support this. I salute you all for doing the work on this. I think the education piece of the voters is incredibly important and getting the message out that he's done something wrong, and people need to watch what that is and why it's bad. I'm sure most people didn't have any idea with the Emoluments Clause. I mean, I happened to go to law school, so it's some idea, not much. But I do think that that's a critical, a critical piece of this, and so thank you for it.
I agree mostly with my colleagues. I want to thank all of you for showing such passion and coming out and bringing this to town meetings' attention. I just want to refocus us a little bit and make sure we all understand, we're being asked to support an investigation. We're not impeaching the president or anybody through a voter favorable action tonight or in a couple of weeks at a town meeting. I think we all know that there are serious people who are supporting this investigation, present company included. And I want to inject another, what I think is a serious voice, David Frum, who wrote a piece in The Atlantic in March. And I'm just going to read a short section of that article that spoke to me. If people retreat into private life, if critics grow quieter, if cynicism becomes endemic, the corruption will slowly become more brazen, the intimidation of opponents stronger, laws intended to ensure accountability or prevent graft or protect civil liberties will be weakened. If the president uses his office to grab billions for himself and his family, his supporters will feel empowered to take millions. If he successfully exerts power to punish enemies, his successors will emulate his methods. If citizens learn the successes in business or in public service depend on the favor of the president and his ruling clique, then it's not only American politics that will change. The economy will be corrupted too, and with that larger culture as well. A culture that has accepted that graft is the norm, that rules don't matter as much as relationships with those in power, and that people who will be punished for speech and acts that remain theoretically legal with a culture is not easily reoriented back to constitutionalism, freedom, and public integrity. Clearly, Mr. Frum has an opinion, but I think it's the words that we should keep in mind as we debate this and go into town meeting next week.
All I want to say is that I'm here today because Trump won. I decided to jump in. Thank you. I would also like to say that I really hope that this encourages a lot of people who are younger than me to start showing up and vote. Even though we had a record turnout for this municipal election, it was still hovering around 16 percent. We can do better, so bring a buddy. And hashtag #ThankTrump, because you're going to see a lot more people like me getting involved.
So I'll end with, to me, this is about abuse of power and corruption. And it's not so much about politics, the impeachment resolution, in that, as one speaker said, you know, if we impeach, if Trump goes, we get Pence, and at least Pence's policies seem to be the same ilk, but I don't know, it's just different. You know, he seems to be a bit more stable.
That's worse.
Could be worse.
So it's like, I turned on the phone and I see the New York Times, "Trump Asked Comey to End Flynn Inquiry." That's today's headline. Yesterday was, "Trump Reveals Secrets to the Russians." And the day before it was, you know, "Fire the director of the FBI who's investigating him." So, you know, I walked into this thinking I would support it, and the only thing, the only thing I was thinking, okay, do I support it personally, or as a member of the Board of Selectmen, you know, should I recommend it as a member of the Board of Selectmen? And I've come to the conclusion that I should recommend it as a member of the Board of Selectmen, that it should be an official statement of the Board of Selectmen that we support this. Because to me, what this president is doing is just, and how he's handling himself and how he's just causing so much disrespect to the office. He's tearing that office apart. It's an office that needs someone who engenders respect and the gravity that that office should have. And he's just disrespecting it. And I think it's going to have, just if this continues, it's really going to have long-term consequences, not only for the policies, but just for the office and for the country. So that wasn't very articulate, but I got it out. So what I will do, I will move the Advisory Committee version, which did some wordsmithing. I appreciate the intent of the resolution to call for an investigation, which is different than what we did, what, 12, 13 years ago with the George Bush resolution, where we said, "He should be impeached." Here we're saying, there should be an investigation. I think that is a good way to go. So, yeah.
And can I also say that the petitioners are in agreement with that AC version of the resolution? Just to make that clear.
Okay. Thank you. So I've moved the Advisory Committee version. All those, are you ready for a vote? All those in favor, please say aye. Selectmen Franco.
Aye.
Selectmen Heller.
Aye.
Selectmen Green.
Aye.
Selectmen Hamilton.
Aye.
And the share votes aye. Okay. And I think that, now go out there and organize. Talk to Cindy. Thank you very much. And that concludes our business for tonight.
Hold on. What about the last thing?
We did it.
Oh, wait. Oh, congratulations.